Item two hundred and seventy. There's this other consent calendar today. See none, I will ask council for motion.
I'll move the consent calendar.
Thank you, a second.
How's that happen?
Can we get a roll call, please?
House number four, then?
Yes.
House number one, then? Yes. Place in our way?
Yes.
May I have a bell?
Yes. Consent calendar passes, moving to item five on the agenda. City manager's oral report, Mr. City Manager, what do you have for us today?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. I just wanted to do some quick calendaring for you and the public so they're aware of the meetings that are coming up. The first is that on the seventeenth of September, the Planning Commission will meet in this room. And the subject, primary subject of that meeting is to do the design review hearing for the new Larchdale Library at the Commons. Probably over at Rosalina's dirty drive. So encourage members of the public interested in that project to attend or watch online and let us know what you think. And it's pretty exciting, the story pulls her up, major milestone. Project feels more and more real every day. On the eighteenth, we'll have a council meeting after in the council chamber and City Hall. One, it's a joint meeting, part of the meeting, it's a joint meeting with the Heritage Board. And a major topic at that meeting will be the sort of introduction from the consultants that we've retained who are studying City Hall. Right now, they're in the phase of really examining what the condition of the building truly is, which is the type of information we're going to need to take the journey to figure out how we're going to rehabilitate City Hall in not just investment for seismic improvements, but make it a building that can last another century. So another valuable conversation that we encourage public to participate and monitor. And then in October, at your meetings in October, we anticipate coming to talk about the options that are still available for investment in the Commons property. As the council recall, the public have been monitoring the process. There were a number of cost items that we identified and said we would bring back to you when we were getting closer to commissioning the actual construction or getting that close. So that conversation we expect will occur at both the October meeting. So again, folks are really interested in the library project and what's happening on that property. We encourage you to monitor and participate because there's going to be a lot of opportunity to think about how we best stretch our dollars and what our priorities are for the property. That, turn it back to Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much for that. Next, we have council members' reports, any council members like to make a report? Go ahead.
Well, a couple of items. One, I just want to report that the ad hoc committee on serenity has had a busy and productive month. We have met with the Marin County Department of Finance, Marin County Tax Assessor, Bonholt Beach Trustee's Legal Counsel, and the head of Cattle's Counseling. We are continuing our work, although we are wrapping it up and we feel that we'll be in a position to issue a report probably within the next thirty to forty-five days. Secondly, I got a tour last week, a really nice tour of Katie Newport Madera Town Hall with the mayor, Eli Beckman. And he emphasized the sustainability features of their new building day. Meaning that it's, they had solar panels, there's battery backup, and there's EV charging. Their building is zero net energy and zero net carbon. And I think, you know, this is a wonderful opportunity when we're thinking about our library. It's a good opportunity for us to also think about incorporating sustainability features into our new library design plans. So the city manager mentioned that there's going to be a planning commission meeting and also a meeting of City Council in October to discuss the library plans. But, you know, I'd like to just, you know, tonight, if my colleagues agree, I think it would be good. Okay, first of all, I don't know if you all have seen library plans, but the library plans don't include solar and there's a gas generator backup. And so if my colleagues agree, I'd like to be able to direct staff tonight to empower them to study options for sustainability at the library and to bring those options to us in October.
Unfortunately, this isn't on the agenda, so we can't take direction from the council during this portion of the meeting. I hear what you would like to know, Councilmember Andre, and I think staff's already working.
Other council reports? Okay, I wanted to say is that we had been in the middle of police and fire negotiations and I'm happy to report that we have worked out and I have approved contracts for both police and fire, so yay for us. Okay, with that, I will close council members' reports. And we are now here for the main events, the public hearing, adoption of the twenty forty general plan. Can we get a staff report on that, please?
Good night. Go ahead and start the question. Sure, we're here to talk about the twenty forty general plan, which includes seven required elements that this, or seven required elements that the state requires. And one of them is the housing element. And the housing element period is the twenty twenty-three to twenty thirty-one planning period. And then the, or the associated environmental impact report that was prepared for those documents. Tonight, we're going to be recommending that you consider those documents and then that you certify the final environmental impact report, which will be making findings required under the California Environmental Quality Act, and also adopting a statement of overriding considerations and adopting a mitigation and monitoring, mitigation, monitoring, and reporting program for the environmental impact report. And then also adopting a resolution to adopt the twenty forty general plan and twenty twenty-three to twenty thirty-one housing element with any recommended provisions. The general plan is the city's constitution, in a sense, and it establishes the goals, policies, and programs that relate to the community's physical development. And it has a number of goals and then policies to implement the goals and then specific procedures and actions to carry out the policy. The housing element is, and is one of the seven required elements of the general plan. And it's required, it's one of the elements that's required by state laws to be updated periodically. So right now, every eight years, it's, it's required to be updated. And it outlines programs and policies to achieve local housing objectives and identifies adequate sites to cover the city's share of the regional housing need allocation, which we call RINA. The, in the staff report, I detail other elements that are required to be covered in the junk for the housing elements. And it does include analyzing constraints to new housing production. And this year, a required component is evaluating affirmatively furthering fair housing. But the general plan, the general plan update started in two thousand and ten with the establishment of a general plan update Citizens Advisory Committee that was made up of fifteen residents as well as members of City Council, Planning Commission, and I believe other board commissioners and representatives to the committee. They met from two thousand and ten to two thousand and twelve and held a number of public workshops, meetings, and walking tours to establish the first draft of the general plan. And then it was put on hold for a while as the last housing element was adopted, or maybe the one part of that. And then also during the stationary area plan process. Then after the stationary area plan was addressed by the City Council, the general plan was picked up again and a general plan update steering committee was formed, which had two planning commissioners and two city council members. And then they also held a number of meetings and public workshops on the general plan update. This was all overseen by Neil Toft, who was the planning director prior to me and put a lot of work into this plan. And I know he received a lot of kudos at the last meeting of the general plan update steering committees. So I wanted to give him some recognition that the majority of the work for this plan was done by him, not by me. Then I picked it up when I started here in two thousand and twenty-two. And essentially, at that point, the environmental impact report was being prepared for the general plan. And then when the environmental impact report draft was finished, we brought the general plan to the planning commission. And then it was also considered again by the planning commission in August, and they recommended adoption. For the housing element, housing element, there was a lot of public outreach over the last three years. There is a website, Living in Larchspur, people could sign up for email notifications. There was a Zoom workshop to kick off the housing element update. And I believe before that, postcards were mailed out to residents. There was a public outreach to try to get the public to complete a survey. And we did receive a number of responses, a hundred and sixty-six responses, three of them in Spanish. And then sent out email, I was going to say emails to really, as we did send out a number of, tried to get together a tenant focus group, which was held to get input from tenants. There was posts in the city manager and on social media. The most comments we received were at the December Planning Commission meeting. And that was when we began mailing notices to the owners and residents of sites within three hundred feet of each of the inventory sites. And so that was down to the last three public hearings, as well as posting the notice on the internet and also our three public notice boards, which are at the Starbucks at Marin Country Mart, there's one at Bonheur Center, and also one at City Hall. The city consulted with the Native Americans, they did consult, want, asked to consult with the general plan, but didn't ask for consultation regarding the housing element. And then the Housing Steering Committee held a number of meetings between two thousand and twenty-two and two thousand and twenty-three that were open to the public and primarily held on Zoom. And then four drafts of the housing element were released for public review and comment prior to submitting the drafts to the State Department of Housing and Community Development, which I might refer to as HCD. So it, the first draft, there was, I believe, a ninety-day public review and cop, I'm sorry, thirty-day review of the public comment period. They had ninety days to get back to us. And then each subsequent draft was released for a week for public review and comment and then submitted to the state for their review. So they've given an informal okay of the plan as it was the latest draft that was posted for the public that the planning commission considered. But we don't have anything in writing yet, and they can't declare that it's, they can't certify it until we have the zoning in place. So if the zoning is adopted, we would provide an information to them and hopefully receive a letter that housing won't make it be certified. So the general plan is fairly similar to the nineteen ninety general plan. There's not significant changes to the land use in the city. There is a new mixed-use land use designation that just applies to the Ross Valley Sanitary District site in Larchspur Landing. And that since its dates back to two thousand and ten, since that time, there's been plans approved for that site for both housing and a hotel. And the district is also very interested in the increased density proposed in the housing element as the site might be offered for or developed for just housing. So while it's a mixed-use designation, the housing element also would allow that site to be developed for just residential uses. And then the only other land use change, or the more significant one, is neighborhood commercial district in the North Magnolia area. The nineteen ninety general plan has that area divided, the, I guess you'd say, the south side, east side. But one side of Magnolia Avenue is in a commercial district and the other is in a restricted commercial district. So now it's just a neighborhood commercial area. There's a new goal for economically viable and vital community industrial areas. And there's a number, a number of programs to encourage commercial development and update parking standards. And by encouraging commercial development, primarily to like fill existing vacancies and improve existing commercial areas, not necessarily new, new construction. And it also supports outdoor activities like outdoor dining and encourages improvement of landscaping in the commercial areas. There's an open space and parkland zoning, or one of the Jennifer programs is to implement an open space and parkland zoning district. So in the, any areas that have been designated for open space and parkland would be proposed for rezoning to an open space designation. Some of those sites are proposed for open space in the draft ordinance that you'll be considering tonight. And then the new general plan has a number of policies for addressing climate change and reducing greenhouse gas emissions that is not in the nineteen ninety general plan. And then the state law requires us to update the safety element when we update the housing element. So there's an updated safety element, and then, of course, the housing element that you're considering tonight. Land use map probably kind of hard to read, either in the scale or in the document or, or here on the screen, but we'll have this online, so it goes into the sites. But the areas, if I can put it out.
I will send over this here. Is that right?
I'm going to show up on the screen. I don't have much to describe here, it's just the North Magnolia area, it's shown as a different hatching and, and say what the Ross Valley Sanitary District site, which has the new zoning designation. And there's more open space areas designated around the city to, to encompass like existing city of Larchspur open space and Marin County, just open space district lands. So I'm going to move on to the housing element, and the housing element has five goals. And those are to facilitate housing construction, protect affordable housing and improve the housing stock, provide new affordable and special needs housing, exemplify sustainable development and energy conservation, and to publicize housing needs and resources. And each of those, or each of those goals has a number of policies that I won't go over tonight, that are detailed in the housing element. And then each of the policies has a number of programs. So there's a total of thirty-four programs to implement the goals and policies in the housing element. And some of them have specific timelines and others are more general and ongoing programs that the city will follow. And then in this housing element cycle, the state has required us to be very specific about funding sources and the timelines and objectives to just make them more actionable programs. The draft ordinance that you're going to be considering tonight implements some of the programs. One of the major ones is the housing element overlay zone that details the rules and regulations for each of the housing element sites. And then it'll also amend parking regulations for emergency shelters as required to implement the state law. And it'll allow residential uses in the administrative professional district where residential uses are currently not allowed. And it eliminates minimum unit sizes, although the building code will still have some minimum unit sizes in order to facilitate housing development. Certain programs are designated to be implemented in two thousand and twenty-four, so I brought those up. And one of them is to determine where SB nine subdivision and units are allowed. And the SB nine subdivisions are, are the, the state law that allows single-family home, single-family home sites to be subdivided into up to two sites with up to four units developed on the two sites, plus eight years of eight years are permitted. And so we promised to find out the areas where those would be allowed because there's going to be some homeowners associations in the city that preclude subdivision and development of additional units. And then to also publicize information on that program to the, to the districts where, where the units are allowed. The, one of the programs is to consider the all-electric reach code that was brought up earlier by Speaker. Another program for two thousand and twenty-four is to contact unit, owners of units that are having expiring deed restrictions. The city has approximately six units that were developed in, probably in nineteen eighty, where a number of housing units were developed in the nineteen eighties, affordable units. And some of the affordability restrictions from that time period are expiring. And so the hope is to contact the unit owners, which I believe were all in Cape Marin, and see if there's any way to extend deed restrictions. Like it's possible, they may mean, they may have, have some desire to have like an advance on the purchase price or some sort of, to maintain or stay in their homes and might be willing to work for the city. And if not, another plan, general program in the housing element is just to try to replace those units, potentially by purchasing new condominiums and deed restricting them and then reselling them so that it wouldn't actually cost the city too much to acquire additional units to replace those units. And then hopefully, those will be funded to an annual fees for different projects. The city's also indicating that it'll update its density bonus ordinance this year and to develop regulations to prohibit new single-family buildings in multi-family districts. And that's just because there, because there's so much more demand for single housing in our community that we're losing multi-family units periodically as, as property owners want to come in, especially the multi-family districts also allow higher zoning floor area ratios. So there's some incentives for people to replace multiple family units with single family units. And then to firmly further fair housing, the consultant for the housing element had put in a program to create a virtual public space for housing issues. And we don't know exactly what this would be, but it's something that maybe we could explore with the other jurisdictions in Marin County. So the regional housing needs allocation is what gives us our share of units that we need to plan for in the city. There's approximately four hundred and forty-one thousand units in the, that the Bay Area regions have to plan for, for this eight-year cycle. And then the city's share of that was nine hundred and seventy-nine units, which are divided into different income categories. The prior housing element only had to plan for a hundred and thirty-two units. Most of the numbers for, well, the numbers for all the communities have increased significantly. But we don't really know what will happen with the next cycle, if that number will go down or not because COVID has happened in the meantime, and there's other economic factors that might influence the next round. The city's allowed to deduct units that we've already approved and are under construction. And so the nine hundred and seventy-nine units is now down to eight hundred and seventy-four units. And with the housing element sites inventory, the city's identified realistic development potential for one thousand one hundred and ninety-four total units. That includes about sixty accessory dwelling units. And so we're allowing a certain buffer of units in order to stay in compliance with the housing element. And I guess that's an important point to make is one of the new rules this year is a no net loss rule. So our housing element must continually be in compliance with the, these RINA numbers. So the number of sites identified for affordable units can never fall below our RINA of four hundred and fifty-nine. And so every time a site develops, we'll need to reconsider the list and make sure that we still have enough sites where affordable housing can be developed. And the challenging part about identifying sites for affordable housing is that the state will not just accept us. Like in the past, we could just say, oh, someone will build affordable housing over a downtown commercial building, which in reality does not happen. If it had happened, we could say, we could put those types of units on our list. But they, their minimum requirement is that the site be larger than a half acre and smaller than ten acres. Because as, as sites are larger, it also becomes difficult for developers to build affordable housing. And most affordable housing, federal and state resources usually require fifty to a hundred and fifty units, which is why the, the half acre size is typically required. So lots are too small, just won't accommodate at least fifty units. And then too large require too much other planning work and are too like, it's, it's too costly for a project developer, apparently. So this, all the other requirement is that, that affordable housing sites outnumber at least twenty units an acre density, which the city primarily has everywhere except for single-family districts. So that, that isn't a difficult requirement. So that that isn't a difficult requirement to me, but mainly the size requirement is difficult because most of our sites are small. Um I'm gonna jump from that. We're gonna come back to the sites inventory with a with a Google map, so it's easy for you to see what the sites are, but. Um I'll cover the environmental impact report first. So the safe prepared environmental impact report for the general plan in the housing element. And it was released for public comment in two thousand twenty two and the beginning of two twenty twenty three. And the draft environmental impact report considered alternatives, including not having. Uh any new development just can or not not adopting a plan, just continuing the nineteen ninety general plan. And also considered an option of reduced residential growth. The the current plan was found to be the preferred alternative from environmental perspective. Um, a lot of the impacts were because if if we don't build housing, we'll continue to have. A lot of people driving into the city. I think that was one of the impacts. And then obviously aesthetic impacts are fewer with with no project, but. Overall, the project was found to be the best environmental alternative. The draft environmental impact report found significant impacts for greenhouse gas emissions and also water. At the time that the draft environmental impact report was prepared, the water district had a water plan that didn't get taken into account. The regional housing need allocation. And since that time, they have updated their report. And have concluded that with the regional housing need allocation development uh that that they would still have adequate water supply under even drought condition. And so the report was updated with a new information. The city received comment letters, and those were um addressed in the final environmental impact report, which was completed in two thousand twenty four. Responses were provided for the comments. The final environmental impact report recommended edits to the draft environmental impact report and then also addressed. The new information like the water use. And in the meantime, since this process was taking um a while. The with the housing element update being tied to it, uh the city actually adopted a number of mitigation measures. For example, to protect archaeological resources and um. There's also an ordinance adopted to um address noise impacts from units that are being constructed near the freeway. And also air quality impacts from construction close to the freeway. So some of the mitigation measures have been reduced because they were already put in place. The final environment impact report didn't identify any newer intensified impacts, but it still uh concludes that the greenhouse gas um impacts are significant. So. The conclusion is that the pro- the project, which is the general plan and housing element, could result in the generation of greenhouse gas emissions. It may have a significant impact on the environment and could cumulatively contribute to greenhouse gas emissions and global climate change. But uh we're recommending a statement of overriding considerations because we don't have tools to uh. Number one, to document what the greenhouse gas emissions will be, um and if they can be sixty percent below nineteen ninety levels, which is the goal. And then also there's a limited a limit to the mitigation that the city can do since greenhouse gas emissions are really. Uh we go beyond the the city, the city limits. And at some point, maybe the city will have the next climate action plan, but in the meantime, um. Where our climate action plan only goes to the year twenty thirty. So the city can approve the project, even though there's a significant and unavoidable impact. And you're allowed to balance um other benefits um. I'm sorry, I was about to get back to the slide and didn't finish it, but you're allowed to you're allowed to b- balance social, economic. Other benefits of a project against the environmental impacts. And um we're recommending that you make a statement of overriding considerations based on the need for new housing. And it's really a mandate from the state that we that we plan for these units. Um and that's detailed in the draft resolution that would be certifying the environmental impact report. The resolution also has a mitigation monitoring reporting program attached. And that would set timelines and uh responsible departments for. Following up on mitigation measures that are recommended to keep the other impacts less significant. So we're gonna skip now to look at the sites. Oh, yeah. A little bit over, or we thought it might be a little more irritating than going through more slides, but. The first site that we'll go over is Site A, which is the Larks for Landing Office Park. And that is currently developed with. Uh occupied offices. However, the property owner has expressed interest in developing um up to two hundred and thirty housing units. To serve workers of the office park. Uh and they would so they would be proposed as rental units. And they're proposing to construct a building at that north end of the parking lot, where they they have a lot of parking area in that. That north end against the hillside is where they would propose to build units. There's no plans submitted yet, but that's just something that they expressed to the city. During the preparation of the housing element. And so this site is on the list for. Or it's it's on the list for some low-income housing as well as mo- market rate housing for a total of two hundred and thirty five housing units. The next site is the Marin Country Mark site. And this site is proposed for sixty rates of market rate units, sixty market rate units. The the site is proposed for up to thirty five dwelling units an acre, but only for seven acres of the site. So the idea is not to eliminate any of the commercial uses, except to potentially build housing over parking and also over the vacant. Uh at or over the vacant Bed Bath and Beyond Building on the east side of the site. And this one was not included for affordable housing since the property owner had actually expressed interest in market rate units. The next site C is a vacant, this is their one vacant lot that the city has. Um it's a vacant lot that was designated. By the sewer district or their offices, but then they since moved to Zanderveld. So that site is included for fifty units of affordable housing. Um because they're a public agency, they would, if they were putting the sites for sale, they do need to offer them for affordable housing first. And so there is there's a pretend, a good potential that they might develop sites for affordable housing. On the other hand, as we talk about the no net loss law, this is the best area of their site, and it has really nice views of probably Mount Tam and the bay. And so there's always a possibility that it would be developed with just market rate housing, which would then leave us with only a buffer of five units. So this is why all the other market rate units are included in the plan, so we still have some sites where affordable housing might be developed. The next site, Site D, is also the sewer agency site. And that's another, just one of the best sites we have on our housing element. It's a it's a large site of nine point one eight acres. Which is essentially vacant. There are still buildings there, so we can't call it vacant. But it's been cleaned from environmental um issues and it's ready for development. And that's on the list for two hundred and seventy units. That includes a hundred lower income units. The zoning is up to thirty five units an acre, which would allow three hundred and twenty one units of the site. But we've just been hearing that um developers that might be interested in this site would prefer lower densities. Uh we did talk to them about going up to forty five units an acre, but it just didn't sound like. Anyone would actually do a project at that density. So relying on it at that density would again um. Put us in a pickle once if it was developed with much lower numbers. The next site at twelve to fourteen Sir Francis Drake. Was originally in the housing element for thirty five units an acre, then was bumped to forty five units an acre after the summer planning commission meeting. And then when the planning commission considered the project uh at their last meeting, they recommended that the city council increase the density of that site further. So the property owner had expressed that he would be interested in sixty market rate units and then also additional units to cover affordable units. And so staff is recommending that that site be increased to sixty five units an acre, which with the density bonus. Uh would get the owner sixty market rate units and as well as additional units for affordable housing. So there's some encouragement to build affordable housing at that site. The next site is Old Quarry Road, and I believe this site is gonna be for sale soon, but the. Current owner had um a representative come in with plans to build additional accessory dwelling units. And existing parking structures at the site, so to create sixteen units. And since they had the plans well-formed, uh we thought this would be a good. Site for the housing elements. We've added it for sixteen units of moderate income housing. And hopefully if the site does change hands, someone still may want to pursue that project. Having additional multifamily or additional ad use of multifamily is another way the city can. Can get units, because it does, I think, if more property owners of multifamily buildings. Knew they could add multi or additional rental units, they might be interested. So it's something that we're hoping to um advertise more to multifamily property owners. Next site G is twenty forty Redwood Highway, which is the Cost Plus Plaza, and that has been included for up to forty five dwelling units an acre. Which allows up to two hundred and forty units of the site. It's been included in the plan for a hundred and ninety six units. Which includes forty units of affordable housing, but primarily market rate housing. And Site H is a hundred Drake's Landing Road. It wasn't in one of the original drafts, or I think it was in an original draft and removed and put back in. Um and currently it's in for up to twenty five units an acre, but that's limited to just two acres of the site. The site is large at nine acres, so that would allow for fifty fifty units of housing that's in the housing element for forty eight. With approximately half of them being affordable. One or a site by, sorry, is one thousand Drake's Landing, and this is the current project that the city has received. And it's developed with a office building today, and the applicants are proposing nineteen units. In uh four different buildings. That would be. Uh they're asking for approval to have them condominiums with the proposing to run out the units. And four of those units would be low, low income units. Site J is five eleven Sir Francis Drake. And you've received comments about both five eleven and five oh five Sir Francis Drake. They were added to the draft. After the December meeting in response to public comment, someone suggested the sites, and they have been. Sitting there vacant since, I believe, COVID times. So they're both developed with office buildings. One was a former medical facility, the other uh five eleven was a former real estate office. And they're proposed, they're currently currently housing is allowed at the site at twenty one units an acre, mixed-use projects. And what's in the current draft of the housing element is to allow up to thirty five units an acre, which would allow up to twenty units at five eleven Sir Francis Drake. And up to eleven units at five oh five Sir Francis Drake. It's been included in the housing element for fewer units, but that's that's just the maximum that would be able to be developed. Currently, twelve units are allowed at five eleven Sir Francis Drake and seven at five oh five Sir Francis Drake. Site L is five oh one via Casitas, and that's the Temple Pious site. And the. Proposal here would be to increase the density in order to allow them to develop additional housing units. And those are envisioned at the lower area of the site where there's a parking lot and um. Other level area. And the hope of, I think the consultant that was first coming up with the plan was that. These could be used for workers that work at the site so that they wouldn't uh have to drive to the site, because there is no parking problems in the area. And we've received a lot of comments about that. Uh but they could be developed for additional senior housing also. The draft ordinance does have a provision that would require them to do a parking study and address the existing traffic concerns. And if and there's a a condition that is trying to give them an incentive or requirements that they can't reduce parking unless they can um. Provide some relief to the existing parking problems. Then we jumped downtown. I'm gonna turn it over to Alex.
Okay, um so the next site is uh Site. M, which is the Mount Tam Racquet Club, one large strip plaza drive. Uh the site is existing, uh the existing density allowed inside is twenty one dwelling units an acre. That's that's not supposed to change. Uh the maximum units allowed under the existing zoning and with the passage of this, the adoption of this housing element would be. Uh seventy nine with fifty of those being designated for lower income uh units. And then after that, we have uh five sixty Magnolia, which is the Lucky's property. Uh that's gone through a bit of change originally before the planning commission in December. It was. Uh thirty five to forty five dwelling units an acre. That they, based on some feedback that we received at that meeting, it was reduced to twenty one units an acre and was a stipulation put into the housing element. And give them a fire rate approval process that they put in a grocery store, based on like the last meeting that has been removed. And the new density proposed is sixty sixteen units to forty units. Uh sixteen being the the units allowed in the new gen- the density allowed in the new general plan. Uh and forty just being a middle ground, look on the earlier earlier iterations. Uh it's proposed for uh eighty six units would be the maximum allowed and twenty eight above moderate income. Uh the next site is Site O, which is five fifty seven and five fifty nine Magnolia. Those are two residences. Uh just in north of the large theater. It's currently uh. Has twenty one units an acres. The density is proposed for thirty five to forty five. Uh and so that would result in uh six additional above moderate income housing units in addition to the five that are that are currently there. And the next one showing is four twenty six Magnolia, which is the dentist's office. Uh that's also proposed for thirty five to forty five units an acre. Uh which should allow for fourteen units, uh and that is supposed to be down uh for uh eight moderate units, eight moderate income and four above moderate income units. There we go. Uh and then the last site downtown is five forty six Magnolia. That's where King of the Roll is currently. And that's proposed for twenty one units an acre, which would result in a maximum of thirty units on the site with nineteen being reserved for above moderate income. Uh I know uh at the last or previous planning commission meetings, there was concern raised about. Uh the historic downtown district. Uh so that would be a component of any review of a potential project there. Uh just ensuring that there's no no negative impacts to the historic downtown. Um and I know we've also had a lot of comments about. The potential development size enassing, especially at Lucky's and Mount Tam. So uh in an effort to head those off at the pass. The the objective design development standards of those two properties. Uh call for a height of thirty five feet to forty five feet, depending on if a developer utilized density bonus uh law or not. Um. And the forty, or in a reference of what forty units an acre looks like, you can think of the Winco project in Port Madera. That's that's kind of the same density.
Could you repeat that? Thank you. Could you repeat that? The last that you did.
Oh, uh yeah, so, oops, excuse me. So for for Lucky's, to give you an idea of what. Forty units an acre might look like if you drive by the whole Winco property, that development there, that's. Kind of on scale with with what we're talking about here.
Site. The uh bar, which is nine eighty Magnolia Avenue. That site was also added later to the housing element draft, and it's currently developed with office uses. It was originally built in the seventies for retail and um with upper level offices. And I don't believe the retail um has ever or has hasn't been there for quite some time. Um and the property owner of that site had indicated um expressed interest in being on the housing element inventory. And the site was added. For up to. Twenty five units an acre, which allows. Up to fourteen units at the site. And it's proposed to be in the housing unit or housing element for eight units of the housing. It's composed of two sites and they are, they are adjacent to the single family zoning district there and one of the property owners. Adjacent to the site has expressed concern with, with having the site developed housing. The other two sites um on, in North Magnolia, one is the Masonic Lodge and that is proposed for. An increase in density of up to twenty five units an acre as well, which would allow. Two more units than what are allowed today and it's proposed um for ten units. Maximum allowed would be twelve. And those are proposed moderate because the property owner has expressed interest in doing some type of affordable housing there. And then. One of the other units or sites that was added to the housing element was site T, which is where Blue Delights is located. And that was added because the site is for sale. And so that's proposed at fifteen to twenty five units an acre. Currently it's made up of two different lots, one has. The Blue Delights building and the other has. Uh the old, a railroad station that was moved from Kentfield and then behind it, there's a two unit duplex, but they're under common ownership. And so each of those lots today would allow for four housing units. Combined with the proposed rezoning, nine units would be allowed. And the site, you could just designate one site as uh one commenter suggested. And just have the Blue Delight site in the housing element and not the other side where the historic structure is located. Potentially historic structure. Um but having the site as a combined site would allow more flexibility to a developer because then they have more opportunities for access. And all of the house, the new housing units, they need to keep the two, but. For example, seven units could be proposed for the, with delight store is instead of um. Building across the two sites. So that concludes the, the sites that are in the high sites inventory. Um if we can go back to the PowerPoint presentation. That's going to give us the numbers for each of the neighborhoods. So you have an idea of how much, how many additional units could be proposed. Okay, so um. It's not on this version, I'm pretty sure, you have a different version, um. Do you have the other one?
Excuse me, I've gone over all this already.
The city council hasn't received the presentation.
Yeah, so, so let's uh, let's take a second, uh and talk about some ground rules for this hearing. Okay, uh this is a public hearing, which means uh it's going to be recorded on Zoom. Which means that people who are speaking, not uh up on dials or staff. Have to come up to the microphone so that you can be heard on the Zoom, it can be recorded. People yelling out from your chairs can't be recorded and can't have that as part of the record. So I'm going to ask, staff is going to finish their report, we're going to bring it back here to talk about it, we'll bring it open up to the public comment. When is your return to talk, please come up to the mic. We'd love to hear your comments, okay, but I'm going to ask you not to just yell things from, from your chairs because it's just going to not make this uh. It's not, the record is not going to be clear on our recording, and ask us to try to stick to the rules, okay? Thank you, I appreciate that.
All right, I can pull some numbers together while other people are speaking, but. We can go to the conclusion, which we're, we're, the planning commission recommended that. You adopt the housing element in the general plan, they did recommend modifications to the housing element to increase the density of twelve and fourteen. Easter Francis Drake. They also recommended that you would increase the density. At five sixty Magnolia Avenue and also delete the requirement for a grocery store for the buy right development. Staff is recommending that you hold a public hearing, adopt the resolution to certify the final E I R. And adopt the resolution to approve the twenty four general, twenty forty general plan and the housing element. With the densities that we've uh described in the presentation tonight. And that concludes my staff report, unless we can answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, so procedure, the next thing we do is just bring it up to council, let me ask council, does council have any questions for staff? And uh before we do, let me just uh thank staff, uh it was a great presentation, you guys put a ton of work into this. Uh and we all really appreciate it, so thank you. Uh having said that, uh questions from, from council?
Sure, um thanks, Leece, um. Could you just repeat what you said with the planning commission just uh recommended, and was that already brought into this and incorporated into this?
Yeah, their recommendations have been incorporated, they recommended generally that the density be increased on five sixty Magnolia and. Twelve and fourteen Sir, Sir Francis Drake, um but they wanted staff. To work with property owners to come up with the specific amounts.
But that's currently?
And that is what's in the, right, the forty units, uh sixteen to forty for the Lucky's site and. Up to sixty five units an acre for twelve to fourteen Sir Francis Drake. And then.
Oh, go ahead.
And then the other uh recommendation was to remove a requirement for a grocery store, so the ordinance had provided that. They need to, in order to get my right approval, the project would need to include a grocery store, but in response to Albertson's. Um writing a letter to the planning commission and attending the hearing, they indicated that they weren't planning, or they, essentially a grocery store wouldn't pencil out of the site. Then, then I think the planning commission was um felt that because the grocery store wasn't coming in, I think that's what implored their decision to increase the density, so.
And that planning commission, that meant, that was two weeks ago when they met, did that letter from Albertson's is part of the public, the public record packet?
It is part of the record and it's also an attachment to the staff report for the ordinances tonight. So if anyone wants to read it, look for the ordinance, staff or ordinance, one of the attachments.
And can you tell me why the two were deleted from the inventory, eighteen, one eighty nine Sir Francis Drake and five twelve. Magnolia, the city parking lot?
So one eighty nine uh Sir Francis Drake is the Southby's real estate site and uh we removed it because. Bank of Marin is proposing to move to that location and received approval when these apartments moved there. So we don't expect that site to develop in the next eight years. And then the parking lot site was removed because there, uh because of the concerns of the December meeting regarding. The units proposed for downtown. And also concerns were raised about loss of the city parking lot. And a program is still included in order to consider that site for potential development associated with the adjacent site that's. Where the fire, or it's sort of the trading station site isn't king of the roll. Um however, I think there needs to be just more public process in that. It, it seemed as though it was going to be a whole, a big holdup to approval of the housing element is. As um I think the downtown businesses were going to then also be involved in. Uh opposing that site and the, the site wasn't included for very many units. But they were all affordable and the city, since the city owns a site, you always have the right to come in and develop it.
Right, so we have twenty sites identified, twelve are essentially in Roseland Landing in the transit oriented area. Or along the Sir Francis Drake corridor right there at the intersection. So the majority of housing is designed to be in that corridor area.
Correct.
And we have five of the, of the sites that are in the downtown area and then three in North Magnolia. So a lot of public comment that had been coming in was really concerned about historic downtown, so this iteration appears to have. Minimized the amount of um of units that would be added to the downtown area.
Definitely from the version that was considered in December.
In December, yeah. What, what were some of the others more significant changes from the December iteration?
I think some of the sites were in, I think that, well, the large for landing, the twelve and fourteen was increased in density. One hundred Drake's Landing was added, which is one of the sites that's near the one oh one. Um the. The tennis club site was proposed at forty five units an acre and that was reduced to existing twenty one units an acre. Those were probably the more significant changes.
And my last question, then I'll flip open it up, the process going forward then is we. If approved, it gets submitted to the state for their approval. Do we have a timeline or a deadline in which we have to meet or we face that?
We're, we're already beyond the timeline for approval of it, so there's a number of risks that the city's at because it's not adopted, this guy could always. I'll talk about those more, um the, the biggest one is someone coming in with a project that's either. Far exceeds what uh we've proposed for one of the sites or includes other uses that. Uh we won't be able to regulate or someone who comes in at a density that's much lower than. The uh was proposed, in which case we won't be able to meet our housing numbers and would need to identify even more sites, so.
Those are one of the, one of the big risks.
Those are the big risks, it's just the, the builders' remedy.
Builders' remedy. And last question, there, of these twenty inventory sites, you said there's only one project so far that has, we received a. Um direct um application for, and that was the one on.
One thousand Drake's Landing Road, we, we have an application for it.
And other than that, we have nothing else, or any of these other ones, okay?
And then I didn't mention it in the presentation, but. It doesn't, having, designating the sites doesn't mean they will all be developed, they're, we're just identifying sites where housing can be developed. And that are large enough and have proper zoning in place so that if someone did want to propose housing, they could, but. There's no requirement that they be developed and it's possible that some of the sites won't be developed.
Thank you.
Question, sure, um yeah, first, I, I, I definitely wanted to. Thank staff, I, you know, worked with you guys a year on this and I think. This is an enormous amount of work and that's some very thoughtful analysis and, and I also want to thank the public, I remember when we were doing this in twenty twenty two and three. I'm knocking on doors and nobody really seemed to care, this is something I think every constituent should be thinking about, so thank you for being here.
Council, we're sorry to interrupt, but you might want to bring the microphone a little bit closer, when we were here for the planning commission, people in the back were not able to hear unless people were speaking close.
Okay, yeah, thanks for that, so anyway, thanks to the public, thank you to staff, um. I have a couple of questions, I, I guess, uh let me just, a few quick general ones, so related to environmental impact. Um you know, fire and, and traffic, so it seems to me none of the. Twenty one candidate sites are in the wildland urban interface uh as designated, I think they've. All been pulled because I'm, one of the concerns I always hear is we're building and there's fires, it's just going to increase risk, is that, is that correct?
Yes, they're, none of them are in, none of them are in the wildland urban interface area. Concerns have been expressed about evacuation in general, adding additional units. And then uh we have discussed it with the fire department and they're comfortable with the plan, they haven't, they don't have any objections to what's proposed.
Okay, and then for traffic, um I, I, I'm sorry, I haven't read all of the I R other, um what, you know, sort of. Impact has been predicted if we get to our limit seventy nine?
So the environmental impact report considered traffic impacts. Um from new unit development and detailed certain delays in traffic as well as. Lengthening queues for certain terminals, so there was an impact from developing. Additional housing units as everyone has commented on in their, in their own neighborhoods. Um however, the environmental, the new rules for considering environmental impact are whether or not uh a project will comply with. Vehicle or an increase in vehicle miles traveled and in general, housing development projects, particularly those that are near. Transit just don't increase, uh don't increase the average vehicle miles traveled, which is the new threshold for. For environmental review, so um I guess the answer is that there is, there, there was some. Slight delays in traffic that, but nothing that was considered as significant environmental impact. Um at the time that the traffic impacts were studied and since that time the city's adopted vehicle miles traveled thresholds. And most of the homes in the housing element are proposed. In an area where they would, all the projects themselves would be considered exempt because they're so close to transit. Um the ones downtown and in other areas are along transit lines, but uh. Generally speaking, the majority of the houses are proposed in areas that have lower. Vehicle trips than other areas.
Okay, and I'm sure you can at least finish, I have to clarify, uh when you said there was some traffic delays, can you kind of quantify that for us?
Yeah.
Just in general, don't worry about it, are we talking about a minute, are we talking ten minutes?
Oh, no, no, seconds, seconds, okay. So a lot of the traffic intersections today operate at levels D and E, which are pretty poor levels. And so um I think that's probably why the, the adding. Some seconds of delay doesn't change that threshold, but there were um, the traffic study does say that, like, um. Yeah, they studied every intersection, but certain ones will have seconds.
Okay, so we're talking about seconds, I just want, okay, thank you.
And then sort of a, a last, I know there's a lot of people who want to talk, but I um, you know, just a, a couple sentences, you know, my. You know, thinking about this for a year long and I'm curious to see if constituents reflect these. Goals, I think one of the big things is we want to push. Our, our housing towards transit and I, it seems like in my count here is seven hundred and eleven of these are, you know, the vast majority are near transit, so I think that's good. The second goal, I think, is we want to increase affordability and to me, the density numbers is critical because if you, density to me implies height and massing. So if you, if you have the density around cost plus and whatnot, you'll probably have affordable, not luxury units, so. There's some area, the third value for me, and I think a goal is to try to protect the character and the identity of the downtown. And that's maybe my last question, there are some concerns, particularly on, and the Lucky's, you know, to have boosted that from sixteen to forty. You know, when I think of Wind Cup or even Roseland at thirty five feet, you know, in that area, I, I just would encourage. Council and then, you know, for us to consider, you know, looking at what that density means in that area, we have up to a hundred and ninety five units. In the downtown area and I, I, I think that we want to be careful, we're, we know we need more housing, but. That area is one which has Magnolia minority. Perhaps the worst traffic and, and you know, and uh I think the pedestrian patterns will be encouraging because people are there, they probably can walk there and won't drive. But generally, I think the mass and the density in that area is something we have to think about and I'm not sure that historic architecture will, you know. So we consider strengthening uh anything in, in this ordinance before passing. That's it for me.
Council, I agree.
And I agree, what everyone has said has been an incredible amount of work, so thank you uh for your work on, on cities we have. I have a question about the Bed Bath and Beyond site. Um it's large, seven acres, but we were only going to put set sixty units on it, which implies. Ten, less than ten dwelling units per acre, why, why is that? I mean, it's known for a minimum density of twenty five, so why aren't we putting twenty five?
Uh only because the property owners expressed interest in that level of units, uh they don't have any concrete plans, but. In their discussions with developers, that's what, that's the type of development that they were looking at, so. The fear is just adding, if we add in more numbers and we don't make it, then we're short somewhere else, but it could be increased. It's just the, the property owner may not.
Okay, I mean, that seems like a prime area for density, I think it's got water views, it's next to smart, I mean, I think. We're looking to put more housing, I think that's the prime site and we should probably consider increasing the.
It could, it could be increased.
Okay, great, um. I have a question about the Lucky's site, um. So, so I've heard the community say that they want a grocery store there. And yet at the last meeting, we decided to waive that requirement, um. So, one, I want to ask. Was there any thought given to putting a strip mall and why is it the strip mall next to it not on the housing site? And why don't we put the grocery requirement on the strip mall?
Uh so the owners of that strip mall requested not to be on the inventory.
Okay, but if we, if we as a community want something, I think we should, okay, so I'm going to, I'm going to.
I mean, you have to give the permission of the property owners to put them on the site.
I don't, yeah, I don't think so, okay, so here's, here's what I'm going to say about the Lucky's site, I think that we need to decide what we want as a community at that parcel. I think it's an extremely valuable piece of real estate and it's critical to the economic vitality of our downtown area. Um there's two schools right there, our new library is going to be there, I think with the Lucky's site being closed, I think we are all missing a very valuable amenity. Um and, and so I want to try and figure out a way to get a grocery store back in there, I think that Albertson's is. While they're motivated. While they may be motivated, they're certainly self-interested, and so I think that we need to protect our community's interests and figure out a way to figure out. How we can, instead of. how we can incentivize people through our housing elements plan to develop what we want them to develop. And while I understand that the strip mall owner doesn't want to do anything right now, if we were to say that you would get by right development with these densities, if you provide a grocery store, and maybe it's not a ten thousand to thirty thousand square foot grocery store, but something smaller. Anyways, I would like to explore other options than just give Albertson's what they want, when our community has clearly said that they would like a grocery store there. On the King of the Roll site, does that include the Legion of Honor? Or what, I couldn't tell from the path, how far that extends?
Yeah, I don't believe it's on there, I believe they also have to be removed.
Okay, so it's just the strip excluding the city parking lot and excluding the Legion? Right, so that's.
Mr. Mayor, would it be all right if I put a little context for your consideration on Councilmember Andre's comments? Of course, this housing element cycle is a little different than previous ones in that you have an obligation, according to HCD of the state, to only include sites that you think have a realistic, maybe not a hundred percent, but some realistic chance of development during the cycle. And while it's undefined, we all believe there may be some consequences if a city loads up its housing sites that do not have any realistic opportunity of having, developing housing during the cycle. It's one of those sort of black box threats, right? But you need to keep that in mind. So we used, at your direction, the previous council's direction, we used voluntary inclusion as the baseline for whether or not it was realistic that any housing would develop during the cycle. So I urge you to think about that as you go through this process, that HCD may not look favorably upon including sites that you have no knowledge would realistically develop into housing during the cycle.
Thank you. If I might just briefly follow up on the incentives comment. I just, I do want to note that a project would need to comply with the city's objective development standards. And a part of that is allowing, in particular, this overlay in the odds. If they include a commercial element, they do get additional heights allowed on the building. So there are some development incentives in that, at least for, for including. Maybe you don't get the grocery store, but it would be smaller shops.
Right, my, my concern is that Albertson's is going through a merger right now with Kroger's, well, potential merger with Kroger's. And so they are, they are having to dispose of certain assets in order to pass antitrust review of the merger. And so they're incentivized to perhaps dispose of this particular part, you know, property, piece of property. And so if we allow them the buy rights to just develop housing on this, we've essentially increased the value of their property, and then can therefore sell it to someone else, to another competitor or non-competitor. And we've basically done that for them without our community really being able to achieve our objectives. And so I think it's important that we think about a cohesive plan for that area. I think that it would be a missed opportunity if we just develop housing there. I am not against housing, I think that we need housing. I think that we need, you know, commercial, ground for commercial and retail, and then housing on top. And I think part of the commercial should be grocery store, some sort of a market option for people who live close to that area. So my sense is I think that this, this parcel end is twenty-eight units. I'd like to bring it to council for discussion, but I think I, I would be in favor of pulling this until we get a chance, we get an opportunity to discuss as a community, what exactly we want to happen there. I feel like if we allow Albertson's to simply develop housing there, that's a missed opportunity for us. And I think we should at least pull this, it's twenty-eight units, it won't impact the numbers, overall numbers, and will give us some time to discuss as a community what we want to see there.
Okay, other council, I'm going to withhold my comments until after I hear the public. Are there any other councilmembers that would like to have questions or say at this point? Okay, seeing that, we're going to open this up to the public. I'm going to ask, we have a timer for three minutes. We want to hear what everybody has to say. Just come on up to the mic. The only thing I would request is if somebody says something and you agree with it, we're going to take notes, and the way I'm anticipating is working, is we get some speakers up here to tell us some concerns, go through a bunch of people, and then we'll address them. We're not going to address each one at a time, because that would take a very long time. So if you hear somebody who's brought up an issue and you're the same issue, you don't need to come up and just repeat the same thing. If you have something new to say, we'd love to hear it. Okay, having said that, come on up. And we can do, or you just come up in form of a line, however you feel comfortable. And I'm going to ask you to state your name, and.
My name is Gerald Young. I live on Via Casitas next to the TAM.
Yeah, you're in somewhere. One second.
Hold on, is there a button on it?
It might have automatically turned off.
Well.
Correct, that's right.
Got it.
Can you please reset your time?
Please.
And I'm also going to ask, is it possible to turn so the speaker can see the, because they're facing me?
The speaker can, you won't.
The speaker can see the now?
No, if I turn it, the speaker will be able to see their time.
Got it, but I won't. All right, so I'll let you know when you have thirty seconds left.
Okay, thank you. My name is Gerald Young, I live on Via Casitas next to the TAM. We live in a very densely populated area. As you may know, Via Casitas is loaded with condos and et cetera. Parking is an extreme problem. The, many of the people visiting people at the TAM, many of the people who work at the TAM park on our street, they violate parking laws frequently. And I appreciate the fact that staff has said that they will require some parking to replace parking. But just to reiterate, there are thirty-two spots that are going to be lost that are for staff at the TAM. Those people have to park someplace. Our street, as I say, is overloaded right now, people can't visit, it's just impossible. And I think that this should be in your conclusions, which it was not. It was sort of set as an aside, but I think if that, if they were to put fifty units down there, they have to divide the thirty-two units that they're losing, plus parking for the people that are living in the new place. The whole area cannot stand it. And by the way, there is a building for sale, a doctor's building on the corner of South Olicio and Bon Air. There are actually two buildings there with some parking, and the whole project is for sale. I wonder if they wouldn't be willing to consider something being done for housing.
Okay, thank you. And I'm sorry, before we get to the next speaker, can I ask the specific property that was mentioned that's for sale, are you familiar with that property? And has anybody spoken with the owners of that property?
It, we did look at it, I think it's not a large site, so it's not going to make any tremendous difference on the housing element numbers. And there has been someone interested in the site for housing, but since we currently don't allow any housing in that area, they didn't pursue it. But I think now that the whole area is being rezoned to allow housing, there could be owner interest. And so it, it's, it is a site that could easily be in the housing element.
Okay, thank you.
Or developed, even if it's not in the housing element.
Okay, next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Terry, and I live on Magnolia and Dory. I can't read your name, is it Els, Elise? Elise, I don't know where you're gone, I know, I don't know where you go your traffic report, but from seven-thirty to eight-thirty in the morning, I cannot get out of my house. And also, coming home from work, I take the Lucky drive exit. And if I'm in that traffic between three and four, it's disastrous. From my house, there is a library that's going to be built, there's Hall Middle School, there's Redwood High School, there's Tam Racket Club, there's St. Pat's Church, and there's the police department. So to say that there's not going to be any impact on traffic or the environment is really, I think, blown out of proportion. The population in Marin is decreasing. Have you also considered counting the illegal AT units in Larksburg? That might be turned to a legal AT unit, ATU units. With the fire concerns that we, we are told for the people who are living in Larksburg to remove all our debris, and we're going to increase the population down pound of, I counted a hundred and thirty-five units. No grocery store in the area, it's horrendous. We're all going to have to get into our cars to drive to a grocery store, and I don't want to have to do that. I really don't. You're taking away all our services in a community where we're trying to keep people in the community and out of their cars, and nobody takes public transportation in this county. There's a water shortage, and we're still going to build all these housing units. And I don't believe any of it, that a lot of this stuff that you're telling me. And why aren't we building a library when we have one already? Why don't we put housing there? And with the increase in traffic, we're going to have a lot more accidents and school incidents with our children, especially with driving these motorized bicycles. And that is what I have to say. Thank you.
Sure, thank you.
Hi, my name's Nicole Serenich. I am the owner, and I live at five eighty-seven Magnolia and one thirty-four Locust. That's directly across from the Lucky Shopping Center. I've lived there for twenty years, been a resident of Marin for fifty. And I, I want to say I very much appreciate you bringing up asking what we want of that space. I did frequent that grocery store, never got in my car, and now I have to drive everywhere to go for everything, groceries, AT stalls, pharmacy, all that. So I just wanted to say that I'm contesting this increased zoning sizes of the fighting downtown Larksburg. In particular, the grocery store, we do not need a wind cup in downtown Larksburg. The proposed densities of these sites are excessive, and they'll forever change the historic charm and character of Larksburg. The buildings will have to be so much taller, I think, maybe five to six stories tall. Some of the densities that you were saying, they'll be completely out of scope with the rest of the buildings in Larksburg. They'll block the views of the property owners along the Magnolia corridor. And you'll set a precedence for more big buildings will become a city instead of quite beautiful town. And it's my understanding too, that some of these buildings could go in, in this size with no provision or requirement for any kind of parking for those, those sites. So it's going to make it harder for people to park, shop, visit downtown. And those of us, like myself, I'm a resident who is in an older property, I don't have a garage, I don't have a carport, I don't have to rely on street parking. It'll make it more difficult, regularly impossible, because that makes sites. I know that the Lucky parking lot is currently used for the overflow of people who visit town. So I want to ask, like, if we were to put that many residents there, where would they park? They'd overflow into other people's neighborhoods, everyone would be impacted. And also, the number of units, therefore the number of people, cars, this was mentioned. My son is a twelve-year-old who goes to Hall Middle School. I watch him every day watch across the, the street, because he almost gets hit almost every day because of the number of cars that are going through there. So I'm out there with my hands stopped.
You just have thirty seconds.
Okay, thank you. So the last thing I just wanted to say is, I was just the other day in the car with my, with my little son, we turned on Magnolia to Dory entering town, and he unprompted just said, God, look how beautiful it is here. Just, I was like, wow. And, and, you know, I want to preserve our towns for him, he's our future. And so I want to preserve the charm and beauty of where we live, please don't do the right thing, and protect one of the last few generations, right?
I agree.
Dear Councilmember Larksburg, regarding the EIR finding of adequate water supply, what this doesn't mention is that the supply would be adequate in a drought only with a fifty percent reduction in consumption, as Marin Uni Water District staff told me today. A potential need for a fifty percent consumption cut cannot rationally be considered adequate supply or be dismissed as insignificant. I agree completely with Councilmember Andre that the boosting the number of units allowed on the Lucky site, possibly up to a hundred and nine, according to the staff report, and waiting public review, just because Albertson's told the planning commission it didn't plan a store there, is not a good idea. There is no reason to reward Albertson's disregard of the community's desires. Stick with the original forty-five units and market requirement and keep public review of this sensitive site. As my letter explained to you, this housing plan does not just comply with state requirements, it goes far beyond them. The plan allows far more units than the state requires, about one thousand six hundred and fifty allowed versus the state's eight hundred and seventy-four or so mandate. The rationale for the more units is that extra units are needed to finance the required market units, but we should not be making concrete concessions based on conjectural contingencies. The plan enacts special overlay zoning, which allows more density with weaker requirements for all sites, even those in or near downtown. And the plan enacts so-called by right procedures, which shut out all public notice and input, even what little the state still allows. In sum, under this plan, it seems to me, we don't just drink the state's poisoned Kool-Aid, we get an extra helping of it. Please, let's not be stampeded into enacting a plan which could turn some part of Larksburg into many Emmy Emery builds. Thank you.
My name is Nancy.
You just turned it off.
Oh, I turned it off, okay. I'm just a bit confused, I was just comparing what I received in the mail to another person that is here. And mine just said five oh one via Casitas, but the person that I was speaking with listed a whole other sites. So I'm confused as to why I just got five oh one via Casitas. It's because that's where I live, and I don't necessarily want to be concerned with all the other sites that are at issue. So it just seems to me that this is just telling me that this was the only one that was going to be discussed tonight, but it's totally untrue. My second comment is, I live by the TAM, I walk up whatever it is, Via Holon or something, there's a parking lot, and there were very few cars there. So I'm confused as to why the TAM says there is no parking. It's a large lot, there were maybe six cars in there. Thank you.
Would you like to answer, Elise, that notification letter that she got? It was in reference to your comment that within.
Right, so we, we sent property owners within three hundred feet of a site or sites a notice so that they were aware of what was coming close to their property. But it also said that there was a discussion of the general plan and housing element.
And that's a typical thing we do, like, for instance, if someone is going to do a remodel of a house in my neighborhood, how property owners have been a certain distance or get notification of that specific residence?
Correct, and there's usually other items on the agenda as well.
Right. Okay.
Okay, go ahead. Hi, my name is Alcine, I'm a resident of Marin Park, we're at twenty-one thirty Hollywood Highway. I just have a couple of questions, this might be a little bit too early to answer regarding the cost plus plaza. But first, sorry about the letter, I live within, I think, three hundred feet from cost plus plaza. I did not get the letter, a couple of my neighbors did get it, so it was just going. I did not get the letter. A couple of my neighbors did get it, so it was just concerning. Everybody got it. The city's supposed to send it to everybody. Or not, I know Kevin Carroll, that's one of the things that he and I talked about in the past, that not everybody was getting all the information from the city. And that he had requested from everybody in our park to be added to the list. So I don't know if there's a list that everybody can be added, because I believe this development is going to continue in the future. So going back to the project, my question was if there's any idea if it's going to be mixed use. If we're concerned if we're going to be boosting another grocery store. Lots of us use Trader Joseph, that's our main stores to go shopping for groceries. And also our other stores, like Cosplus Market or Bed Mill. And I also have another couple of questions regarding traffic. That exit, we use Lucky Drive. And most of the developments, I wouldn't say most, but a lot of the developments are going to be in the Cosplus Plaza, in the Lark Street Natty. And there's going to be a lot more traffic that's going to house, I think it's going to be more than a few seconds that is going to affect all of our driver people trying to exit the highway and trying to get into those developments.
Thank you.
Hello, David Moll, David Larksburg here. And I would like to get back to Councilmember Andre's comment about maybe taking another look at the Lucky site. Is there anything that the city can do in this general planning process to newly encourage a market there? You know, I've talked many times before this council about the need to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions. And by not having a grocery store in there, as one of the speakers already said, a lot more people are having to drive to do their grocery shopping. So I know that in these council meeting processes, a lot of times we get a comment like that, like Councilmember Andre's comment, Councilmember Andre's comment, that kind of gets lost when it comes back to the full council for some decision. And I really want to emphasize that comment, because if there is some way to pull that one parcel out for further consideration while moving ahead with the rest, it really seems to me that's the argument. It's such a, and I have no idea what the community can do to encourage a grocery store there. But if anything can be done, I really encourage the council to take that action. Thanks.
Good evening, Mayor Tendell, City Councilmembers, City Manager, Council and Planner. I got everybody. My name is Richard Atwood. I own site E. And I'm excited to have it included in the housing element plan. I want to thank the Planning Commission and Plan for increasing the maximum units on my site to 65 per acre. If at all possible, I would love to have market rate units of 60, and I'm open to affordable housing on top of that. The site is unique in that that's the new wheel bicycle site, if you're not familiar with it. One quarter of my property is 80 feet from the ferry terminal parking lot. I'm across the bridge, multi-use bridge from Smart. I'm adjacent to Highway 101, and I've worked there for almost 25 years, and I ride my bike all day. I don't use a car. I have to drive to get there, but once I'm there, it's such a convenient location. I think the density right around the ferry terminal maybe should be a little higher. At the planning commission meeting, I asked for 60 units for my site. If that could be a possibility, it would take maybe a little pressure off sites that are further from transit and also further from Highway 101. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jeff Candrian, representing some neighbors from the St. Francis Drake corridor. This is specific to sites J and K. Look, I think in talking, well, I guess I should first ask, I believe J and K were a late addition. Do you know when those were added to the housing proposal? Yes.
So whatever you ask, you ask your question, we will come back to it. Okay, so I got that you're.
So that was the first question. I know when I reviewed this last year, I didn't see it on. And the neighborhood was definitely concerned when we all got the notice. I think three weeks ago was the first notice that any of us had received. I'm sure it was posted publicly, but again, reviewing the first draft, we didn't see anything, and then it was subsequently added. We're in talking with a lot of neighbors, and some may feel differently, but overall, we're not opposed to housing. Look, change, I think part of these laws or so, we all are impacted to an extent by the change. Not just downtown, not just the outskirts, but all of us collectively as a community should bear the cost of these changes, right? I've been in Marin for a few years. My family has been here for over 100. It changes a lot most times, right? We're not opposed to change, we're not opposed to housing. But overall, I think with the late addition of J and K, there probably hasn't been enough review of the environmental impact. I know there's various concerns that the neighborhood shares. We actually have a petition listing out a number of these with over 20 signatures. This will increase probably pretty dramatically over the coming weeks. Again, this was a late addition. So the last question I have for you all is, will you remove J and K from the proposed changes? Again, those are already zoned for housing. So we're just more concerned about the increases there. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Do I get the answers now? We're going to answer everybody. You know, once you close all the comments, we'll come back and go through the list and answer it.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for listening to me. I think Larksburg.
I'm sorry, what was your name?
Oh, Amy, I think. I think Larksburg, Larksburg needs a park. It is one of the only cities I know that doesn't have a park. And I think the King of the Royal area needs to be open space. City needs to buy it. They need to tax the residents proportionally so that we can have a park for people to come and hang in, kids and older people. Secondly, I live up in Hillsong, pretty bright, near the Tamil Pies. And I won't go on about the parking. But if you take away the employee parking that is now there where they want to put the site, there is nowhere to put the parking. We need 50 parking spaces as it is right now to take off the relief from the street. And also people cut through the neighborhood in order to get to the doctor's office and avoid the St. Francis Drake-Bonier intersection. I'm up portal, they go down via Casitas, they go down via Holland, and they go along South Alucia. It's nonstop traffic all day long. Pulls up at night, but for the most part, it's just nonstop. So you have more than one thing to consider when you consider more density. My suggestion would be is to contact all the apartment owners in the whole hill, ask them to raise their height limits, add another floor, spread the density out through the whole hillside rather than just one location. The Tamil Pies should have never been built there in the first place. Look at Marin County, you don't see buildings on the top of the hill going to Tamil Pies. Thank you for considering.
Thank you. Hey, anybody else that was feeling shy that now would like to come up? Okay, seeing nobody, I will close the public comment portion of this hearing and bring it back to council. I am going to try to be efficient because I'd like to address as many of these as I can, so please forgive me if I'm short. I know people are not, none of us can agree with what we say or decide. Do our best. All right, let's start with, first comment I see was with the parking issue by the Tamil Pies. I've been up there, parking's fine. Right, so the question is, I actually want to put units up there, but what are we actually requiring somebody to do who wants to put units up there? And what can we require them to do so that parking doesn't get worse? And I guess that's a question for staff, anything that feels comfortable answering.
I can tell you what's in the draft ordinance. So it includes a condition of approval that the site is being provided by right approval, but as a condition, the applicant shall provide a parking demand analysis for the current and proposed uses, including actual resident employee and non-employee caregiver parking demand, existing parking availability and IT parking standards. If parking of the site is considered inadequate, the report shall provide parking management strategies such as workforce housing, transit passes, shuttles, and unbundled parking. If current parking is inadequate, parking for current residents, employees, and caregivers shall not be reduced unless recommended parking management strategies are implemented, funded, and recorded as a de-restriction on the site prior to issuance of a building permit. That doesn't address parking for the new units, but that is because there's so many, so many laws that will give them an out for parking. So there's, the city does have parking requirements of at least one space per unit in that area. But there's, make it request a waiver under state density bonus law that we wouldn't be able to deny. So this just addresses trying to address the current, or current parking problem. Now, someone who's building housing there could voluntarily put in more parking that's required or the parking that is required, so it's hard to say how much someone would put in.
All right, so I'm going to go with the premise that somebody is not going to put in more than is absolutely required. So based on what's the wording that we've used, do we have the discretion to deny somebody the right to build there if we are not satisfied with their apartment?
The way I see it is that they couldn't remove any of the existing parking, that they could still build housing there. So they might not be, they could still be allowed to build housing, but they wouldn't be allowed to eliminate any of the existing parking.
Right, but they could build housing, which would bring in.
Increase the parking demand.
Exactly. So my question, and I don't know, Sky, if this is your question for you, is is there anything that we can do that we can write into this so that we require a parking plan that if we are not satisfied with, we can not allow them to move forward? Or is there, is there any control that we have to prevent parking from getting worse?
Well, and one of the things that I think is important to bear in mind is something that Elise already touched on, but I should expand upon, which is the use of density bonus law. And so I'll step back because I know that people coming to these meetings don't always have a lot of background on some of these technical laws that exist. But state density bonus law is something that the state has had in place for a long time, but has updated, has attempted to address housing issues around the state. It began as a provision that allowed for a developer to exceed a city's maximum density if they provided a certain number of affordable units. So if they did affordable units, they got additional market rate units. The state has expanded that to include additional provisions to encourage housing development. One of the things that they have added is dramatically reducing parking requirements for housing that uses the density bonus law. So in essence, if they agree to provide a certain number of affordable units within a project, even if they don't build additional market rate units, they qualify for other benefits, including significantly reduced parking standards. So that's a long way of coming around to whatever the city council does, as long as you allow housing there, and assuming that the city has a certified housing element, a developer will likely be able to use density bonus law to eliminate, to reduce any parking standards that you would attempt to use to, 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 any standards that you would choose to try to enforce. Additionally, there are other, and that's just the density bonus law. There are other state laws that also reduce the amount of parking for residential development. Now, all that said, if you wanted to further condition the allowance of byright development on the site to a certain parking standard, that is something within the structure of the byright grant that's being proposed that you could likely do. I, you know, all these things are though are a trade-off. This is not necessarily legal opinion, but just giving you the benefit of experience with this is that some developers actually do want to do more than the bare minimum in terms of parking because they think that's what their product type is going to require. Others of them want to do the least that they can get, they can provide that's legally mandated. So there may well be in, in creating parking requirements may have effects on who's actually willing to develop the site, which has effects on the city's ability to actually achieve the goals that are being set out in the housing element. And then additionally, as Elise mentioned, we have an informal statement from the State Department of Housing and Community Development that the housing element as proposed would be approved. Changes like the ones that you're talking about are ones where we'd have to go back to HCD and determine whether or not they'd still be willing to approve it with those changes. They may require changes in other policies or other re-zonings in order to, for them to believe that the housing element satisfies state law.
So, and that was enough. Let me see if I can summarize it, which is, if we leave it the way it is, then somebody can develop it. There's no way we can stop this from becoming a worse parking situation. We could condition the byright condition, which will streamline, which is a benefit to them, on them providing parking, which would basically say, we have a good developer who is willing to do parking, we streamline them. If we have a less, you know, good developer who doesn't care about parking, they would have to go through a more difficult and expensive process for them. And if we do decide to do that, then it might affect how the state looks at our general plan. I think that's a fair summary. Okay. So let me put it up to council, other comments on this issue?
But I think this is an important thing for our public to understand is that Larksburg has to follow the rules that are made by our state legislature in Sacramento for the entire state of California. And we are a little town in the entire state of California that has to follow the rules that are created by legislature about parking. And one of the rules that they, laws that they passed recently to increase housing is to reduce the requirement for parking. And that's not something we wrote. That's not something we decided. That's something our state legislature voted on and the governor signed. So I know we were concerned about parking, but we have rules to follow that are the laws that our legislature created that says parking is not, cannot be factored into many of the equations for housing. And especially if you're within a transit area. And many of these new laws that are being dropped forward say, no parking is necessary whatsoever. So we are faced with some constraints, and we're trying, and our staff are trying to develop a plan that meets those requirements that are put forward by the state. And we, the state we live in, and all of us are following those rules, and we risk jeopardizing some benefits that come to Larksburg from grants or other things if we push back too hard against some of these rules that aren't really able for us to push back now. Because that's the law that was signed by the governor. I just want people to be clear with that, that these aren't rules we made. These are rules that we are following as a member of a city within the state. Did I just?
This marriage indulged me in. Of course. Of course.
In listening to the speakers and now the initial commentary from the council, uh, instruct that one responsibility, we have a staff is to provide some historical context to this conversation. And, uh, it may be forgotten that Larkspur is one of the few Marin municipalities that spent the time, money, and resources to fight almost everything you're talking about. And we went to the agency that assigns these housing numbers with a pretty extensive appeal about water, fire safety, inability for our traffic system to necessarily handle this housing. We were rejected on every single one of those rooms. So I just want the public, because I know a lot of folks here have not been participating with us for the four or five years, that you've been working on this issue, to know that we are not here today because the council all along has said we're going to do whatever the state wanted. We fought the good fight. I, I think actually Larkspur and Sausalito deserve some credit. We spent, we're the two agencies that spent a lot of time arguing all these points and we were told, so what? So I just want folks to understand that what Vice Mayor Way is saying is really important. We were told state law is now what it is and you need to do this. And so part of the exercise tonight is we already took the shot at telling the state, these rules are bad. Just want to make sure that's in your record.
I just need to do one more comment on that because I think it's important for everybody to understand. Larkspur is a, a unique, um, geographic location in Marin County. And we sit at the crossroads of two freeways, 101 and Sir Francis Street, which leads into 580. We have a ferry terminal, we have a train station, we have, um, really sort of the hub of a transit corridor. We do, because that's just the way our, our, our geography is. The, the laws that have come out of the state in the last four to five years and more even, uh, that will be coming in the next two years, focus on these transit oriented areas to increase the density and to decrease the parking and to ignore the traffic because people are supposed to use the transit. Now, we all know, nobody, like somebody commented, people don't use transit as much. But that's what the vision is of the state and that's what the law says. And so we are in this compacted area. Larkspur Landing and being there, Highway 101, where much of these rules apply. They wouldn't apply if we were in Danville or some other place where we don't have such a transit corridor packed area, but we do. So I want everybody to know that, that we are living in a very unique area, that we love our historic downtown, but we also are the center of transportation within this entire county. That's just the fact.
But let me ask you a, a, a quick question. Um, you, you mentioned, uh, that we could, uh, add parking as part of a condition for the by right, um, privileges. Um, can we condition, let's say a shuttle or some other thing that would, uh, help people not have to drive anywhere as, as a, a condition, or is that not really possible?
My concern with even just the parking requirement is the state's going to see it as something that's determining housing production. They, they're going to say that a 50-unit project isn't going to be able to afford to provide a shuttle to the community or not even, that, that it would even hinder someone building affordable housing at the site. So we could add in conditions, but I just don't believe the state is going to not see that as something that's precluding housing development at that site.
Okay, so then we, uh, council, anyone else have comments? Good. Did you vote?
No, finish your thought.
No, I'm, I'm.
Yeah, I, I just, um, trying to go back home. Elise, if you can remind me, uh, the overlay that we did, you know, the odds. Um, I remember having a lot of discussion for multifamily of the minimum number of parking spots per unit. And the debate was going to be point five or one to one point five. So, you know, we're not saying that people are going to build and not have parking. The question was what the parking allowances would be. So if they work within the odds, you know, and they build up by the Tampa Pies, they will have to have parking. I mean, that's, you know, I, I think I'm getting a sense.
The objective standards require parking, but as the city attorney said, other laws allow them to ask for waivers of those parking requirements.
I, I understand that that can happen.
But that's true.
So I, I just don't want to say that we were treated entirely.
Right.
We worked very hard to create zoning laws that will rationalize and try to meet our community standards as much as possible. And there are workarounds to that, but a developer could work within the odds within, you know, the zoning that we have up at the Tampa Pies, and they would have to put parking for every unit or, you know, some ratio of their own.
Correct.
Okay. Um, and then, uh, Mayor, if we can go back, I just, one of the questions was from Alcee on the mobile home park. I think the question, you know, the concern I tried to understand in the public comment letters was like, you know, we build around cost plus that will impact us and other communities. And the thought was it might get rid of Trader Joe's. So maybe staff can answer. I, I, my understanding is by, you know, having the candidate properties there, it has nothing to do with losing Trader Joe's. Or can you clarify that, please?
We don't know what the developer wants to do at that site, but so they haven't indicated if they were going to replace commercial uses with housing or build in addition to the commercial uses there. So I can't, I can't promise. But I, I would assume that some of the more, less successful retail spots would be their preference, but that's just, that's just a guess because we don't have a proposal for that site yet.
Alright, so I, I'm actually going through this a bit where you're talking about the, the TAM, right? And the parking issue there. Is there anybody else on, on council that has a comment about that particular issue? Alright, I saw a hand. I know public comment is closed. I am going to reopen it. I'm going to ask you to step up to the mic. I'm going to ask us to put one minute on the timer if we could.
I just have a question.
Okay.
I just have a quick question. Um, I'm sorry, I don't know your name.
Alright, you, you can just ask your question.
My question was, you had mentioned that, um, these aren't necessarily the views that you have, but you have to carry out your obligation from the state. Who do we contact? If we want to go above and beyond you so that our voices can be heard?
Okay. I want to fund the square of Governor of Avenue. I mean, all these directives are executive, then legislative.
Just write to him.
I mean, that's, yeah, this is the state legislature signing into law by the governor.
Alright.
Um, go ahead. We, we, we got one, one, one minute on the timer. Uh, just on thirty seconds.
I want to know if.
Folks, alright, good. If you could just please state your name for the public record.
Carol Young. Uh, I want to know what, what is going to be required of the TAM to replace the 32 units of parking they have now. The only site on that lot where you could really build a building is in the parking lot. And, and that site's gone when they build and the 32 units are there. Where do their employees park?
Okay, so thank you very much. And my understanding of the question is if they take away units that are currently there by building on that spot, is there a requirement to, to replace those units? And my understanding was it was.
So the, the parking spaces, currently the ordinance is drafted so that they can only eliminate those parking spaces if they show that they're going to relieve the current parking problems. If there's a parking problem, which we would assume a report would say there is.
And, and we would have the authority if they take away those parking spots to determine whether there's solutions at.
Right. So presumably they either would build over parking or build to the side of parking to maintain the spaces if they needed to maintain the parking.
Thank you. Alright, let, let me ask council, um, we have probably 10 issues that have been brought up that I'd like to, to address. Do we want to save our conclusions until the end, or do you want to close out each issue as we go through? And then I'm going to, I'm going to recommend you save them till the end, only because there may be some horse trading if we need a certain number of units to answer that. But I wanted to get a pulse for what, what council.
Sorry, I, so, I, I didn't quite follow.
So, so, so my question is right now, we're talking about the, the one project that the TAM and the parking issue. Is there something that we should do differently? Um, my question is, do we want to conclusively say this is what we're doing with the issue? Or do we want to just talk about it at the very end?
Yeah.
Okay, that's, that's my.
Some of the public comments, some of the public comment, we just, just have some questions that need to be answered by staff, so.
Okay, okay. So, uh, the next, and I, I have some notes. If I forget anything, somebody else, please, please jump in. Uh, the next thing, um, that I had, uh, was, uh, let's deal with the luxury and, uh, whether it's going to be grocery store, what we want to do with that. Now, let me first say that we do not have the power to put in a grocery store. It is a private property and we can't require them to do something like that. I love them to put in a grocery store. We could incentivize them to put in a grocery store, but that's really the extent of what we could do. I don't think we can, you know, outlaw everything but a grocery store. You know, so there's a limit to what we can do. So let me open it up to council, uh, and get some thoughts on, you know, we've heard, you know, public comment there, everybody would like a grocery store. I think it's legitimate. I think it would be in our community's best interest. But how do we want to analyze it? And I'm happy to hear anybody's comment on it.
My first name.
Sure. Um, I, I mean, I, I, I appreciate, you know, uh, Councilmember Andre really, um, advocating so strongly. Um, I, I kind of break it down. Uh, my original concern was about preserving the character of the downtown and the traffic and so forth. Um, the, the, what stood out to me immediately wasn't the grocery store, but just the density. And the concern that the, you know, average numbers, you know, 16 or 20, you know, were, were very high for this site. And I, I wanted to discuss and challenge that. So that's, you know, the start of what I, I knocked on so many doors. There are seven or eight neighborhoods that surround there from, you know, Blue Rock to, you know, Rose Lane. And I, I think it's, you know, one way to frame it is, well, look at these kind of privileged downtown Larkspur people. They just want to walk. Uh, you know, big business thinks differently, you know, look at California or the nation. But to me, it's not just community interest. There's a significant senior population. And for them, access is an issue in Rose Lane, in Heather Gardens, in, you know, Larkspur Isle and all of the areas. So I think, well, that's one reason I think it's an important issue. The other is it, it really, if, if you want to build in a downtown area, if that's a way to create pedestrian, uh, and, and sort of low traffic and low greenhouse gas type communities, you can't just have Kiko in left bank. That one of the main things that people will jump into their car and fog up and, and, you know, and increased gases is for going to a grocery store. So I think it's, it's something that's really important for the general plan of that area. Um, and, and then lastly, I, I totally agree, you know, we, we can't control that, but it's not only incentivizing, it's disincentivizing. So I just, I just leave that as a priority. It's an important, you know, point. It's something that I've heard loud and clear for almost every door I'm knocking. So, so I, I just, you know, I want us to be thoughtful about it.
Uh, let me ask, I, I know you already spoke about this. Catherine, do you have a, a thought on this one then?
I just think, um, everybody should read the letter that came from Albertson's. Um, it's on the packet for the planning commission that they held. Um, they are the owners of that building and they outline in their two-page letter what they're interested and not interested in doing there. Um, we are, uh, in constraints because we can't, we can incentivize, but we can't force a business owner to provide a certain product or provide a certain service. We can do things within limitations. We can agree that you can't have a liquor store or something in certain areas, but we, this, this two-page letter was very, um, enlightening to me to see what, uh, they hope to, um, have to promote for developing in that area. And, um, they specifically say that what they don't want to help promote is a grocery entity there. And I believe we do need a grocery, but this letter tells me that they're not going to want to support that. So I think the planning mission had, um, had this letter and also had the information from the representatives from Albertson's that, um, that's a, that's a no-go for them. So we're stuck with that too. And unless somebody has a, an idea of how to change a corporation's mind, that finds that that building that they have there is not profitable. They closed it for all the reasons why we all know. Um, and they're not interested in, in bringing back a grocery to that area. And that's what we're faced with. So if anybody has a creative idea and how to incentivize a grocery there, I'd love to hear it, but at this point, the current owners of that property, that brand grocery are not doing.
Alright, and, and, I mean, you, one second before you, you jump in, let me ask staff, um, Sky, maybe, hey, you, um, about our options. That let's say we as a community say we want a grocery store. And we want to say, hey, you know what? If somebody does put a grocery store there, we will reward them by letting them put in housing. Or whatever other incentives, can we be that specific? And linking it to a specific type of, of business in order to incentivize people? I mean, I, I don't know if the law even allows us to do that.
Uh, the previous version of the last draft of the housing element basically, uh, was structured so that the, um, owner would, um, get by right development of, um, residential development to a certain density if, if the project also included a grocery store within a certain square footage. The letter that Councilmember Way referred to was, was a response to that. Stating they're not interested in doing that. That's not a model that's of interest to them. It's, uh, that was in a version of the housing element that HCD said that they would, would have informally said that they would approve. So it's a model that we can use. Um, I think, um, you know, I think the, the city manager and, and planning director may have some things to say about, you know, what the, what the potential outcomes are for the community if that's the approach that council wants to take. Um, when you have an owner who's stating fairly straightforwardly that they're not interested, that that's not a model of development they want. And then I would add, I think it's also worth, um, taking a step back and, um, considering that, um, you know, it, it, this could remain a site that's just zoned for commercial development. Um, if a developer is, um, adequately interested in putting residential there, um, rather than, um, rather than commercial, um, we have seen some creative use of density bonus law to get around zoning. Um, and, and HCD, um, you know, and the Attorney General's Office have, um, backed some also creative uses of. So I'm not saying that it would, that, that they can absolutely get around just straightforward commercial zoning. But if that was all that was on the site and HCD certified the housing element, I just also think that the, the council and the community need to understand aside from what might happen to the site just being left vacant is that an, an, an adequately motivated, um, developer may try to find a way to use state law, uh, in the future to, to find a way to do residential development there anyway.
So, so let me ask this. Um, what we originally had, which is the by right privileges, you know, if they put a grocery store in there. If somebody chooses not to put a grocery store in there, they're not hurt by that. It just would reward somebody who does that. Is that accurate? If I remember the, it was also still going to have residential development potentially.
Same.
Yeah. So it'd be 21 units to the acre. They, they, they still would have allowed 21 units to the acre of residential development there. It would just go through the normal process for development approval, including, um, a process using the objective design standards. Um, the, the, so there would still be the, the option to develop without, um, without a grocery store there. The grocery store inclusion was being incentivized by the use of, um, by the, by by right development.
Okay.
Um.
Right.
Yeah. In response to what you had asked, Mr. Mayor, recognize that you're operating in a bit of an information vacuum and that none of us do this type of development. And so to answer your question sort of about the realism of this, if you want to put this process on pause and pay a third party to tell you the scale of development that's needed to offset the costs of developing first floor commercial retail space, we have done that in the past. It's not a cheap exercise, but we can do that if that interests the council. But I, because I think it is a bit risky to suggest to the public that we have any idea what the scale of development is required to make that whole, whole package work. And these incentives are not really financial incentives. Um, they're, they're modest in, in terms of financial value to the developer. So I, I feel we should take some care and if you want to get into really pushing for this idea of mixed use on this property, you should arm yourself with a third party who does this for a living's expert opinion of what you should expect to get on the site. I already made my first recommendation. I also, just before I give the mic back to you for another, I think you need to jump into your conversation with the council. I want to emphasize what Sky was just saying is that the property is currently zoned commercial. The property owner could just decide to lease the building it has now to a non-grocer in the generational opportunity. So you have to bear all of that in mind. You could essentially create a situation where there's a happy tenant in that building and a business that's on a grocery and we go so many years before having this conversation again.
I understand that. Um, so, so I guess my, my question is, um, if you're trying to find a happy meter, we're at a little, little bit of an impasse where we want them to do something they don't want to do. You know, it's, it, you know, it's a kind of a, what, what kind of style? So my, my question is, I'm not seeing the harm of giving the buy right, um, opportunity if they're willing to do what we want them to do and not giving the buy right opportunity. If they don't do it, they can still do housing, right? And, you know, they, they just wouldn't get the, the buy right benefits unless they did what, what we think is in the community's best interest. Am I missing something of why we wouldn't want to keep that in there?
The government person in me is going to say, no, you are not missing anything, Mr. Mayor. The, the person who is not a developer but has worked with developers over the years, uh, I've heard, you know, there's an economic component of what they will and won't entertain. And the buy right, add-ons to these properties have some incentive for development that I can't tell you what that actually is, but I know it's a real thing. And I don't know if by lifting it, you are essentially reducing incentive to create housing. That could be a reality. That's again, short of asking some developers to, to come talk to you, we would want to go out and get a third party.
Yeah, I, I know, except time is a little obesence.
I, I'm just trying to, you know, my job is to just give you all these things to think about and these are all things you should be thinking about.
All right, Councilor Andre, you're up.
Okay, great, so I think that, yes, I totally take your point. We can't make any private owner of real estate do anything. But I think that, you know, to the extent that we can set the incentives so that our community will get, um, what we're, what we want to get, I think that's the goal here. And to write the policy in a way that maximizes our opportunity to get what we want. Um, I, I think that, you know, look, I'm not talking about doing a, you know, full-scale, you know, financial study on trying to have people figure out whether and what size grocery store is, is, um, viable there. I just know that our community would like a grocery store. I think that there would be a dramatic, that there would, there would be a significant missed opportunity if it just became housing. I mean, you know, it's vegan now and the foot traffic there and the traffic there has dropped significantly. I'm pretty sure that the, the, um, business owners in the shops and the restaurants along that strip have seen probably a, a, you know, severe falloff in, in foot traffic and business. I think that, you know, again, tied to the economic vitality of our neighborhood and the adjacent downtown area, I think it's really important that we have a grocery store or a market there. And so I would be in favor, okay, of doing the buy right tied to a grocery store. Although the buy right was written with a ten thousand to thirty thousand square foot grocery store and I think that may be too large and that could be why Albertson's is, I, I don't know what they're objected to, but that could be something that they're objected to. And I would say also that, you know, there are other grocery store operators like Good Earth, Nuggets, and there's Kmart in San Francisco, or, or actually there are East Coast, um, you know, but in Asian grocery store. There are other grocery stores that are not owned by Albertson's who could potentially be interested in developing at that site. And so I think I respect, you know, what Albertson's, I, I, you know, I, I respect their view, but I also, you know, let's keep in mind that they're going through a different profit. There's another process for them that's ongoing when they're subject to merger with another grocery store chain. Um, also, they own the Safeway that's in Porta Madera, which is a competitor, potential competitor to this site. So they may not be, like I said, they're self-interested, they may, they, they're motivated, but they're self-interested. And I think we need to look out for our community's interests and so that's really kind of our money. I, I would like to find a way to, and again, go back to my comment about cohesive planning. You know, that parcel there is owned by Albertson's, it's owned by a private owner who owns the strip mall. It's by, owned by, is also owned by a different owner who owns the gas station. You know, if we really want, we have a vision for that space, which I would argue is probably one of the most key intersections in our town. Um, we, we should try and figure out whether the grocery stores should even be at the former Lucky Site or should it be, you know, on, on, you know, where the strip mall is. And, and I'm just, I, 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 I want housing, I think we need housing. Um, my sense is, you know, I, I'd rather just pull this one off of, that, that, that's my preference. But if we don't pull it, then I'm okay with a buy right tied to a grocery store. That's, that's where I'm at.
Say, and, and I just want to throw out my cons- uh, concern, but, but my priority. Well, we got to pass something tonight, okay? Because if we don't pass something tonight, then, uh, people are just going to come in and start building and we're not going to be able to do anything about it. You know, they can put whatever they want, like, you know, all these exceptions. So we got to get this done tonight, we can be able to authority to, to make some changes if we need to. But I want to check with staff and make sure if we make changes, you know, before we do it, how that's going to affect the state looking at our plan and that's going to be a problem. So, uh, ha- having said that, the, the buy right's already been approved by the state tentatively, is my understanding. So I, I don't think that's going to be an issue. I want to get back to Gabe's, you know, I'm sorry, it's, it's, it's up here, right? I want to get back to Gabe's issue about the density. Um, and I want to ask, uh, staff, um, if we have been approved or tentatively approved, whatever the situation is, and we make some changes so that, let's say we end up with the same number. Let, let's say we take X number of units away from one area and add that same number to another area. In general, are we going to be okay with that or is that going to be a problem?
I think you have flexibility with the mark, any, any sites that are designated as market rate sites. They're providing a buffer in the sense that if the other sites that are designated for affordable housing are not developed with those numbers, the other sites, we can argue, will be developed with at least twenty percent affordable under our inclusionary ordinance. So it's good to have a large number of market rate, but we, but we do have excess market rate units. So we, we would still meet the numbers and still have an adequate buffer.
And, and my understanding is the Lucky Site is market rate.
Right now, correct.
Okay, so returning to Councilmember Paulson, what is your recommendation about what would be an appropriate density for that area?
Yeah, um, well, I mean, the, the first, you know, observation is, is, you know, you know, first I agree we need to do something tonight and it seems like we've, you know, talked a little bit about parking, we're really focused on Lucky's. I don't know if there's much else on my mind or the council's mind, but, um, this is twenty-eight out of a thousand one hundred and thirty-seven. So, you know, even pulling it, I don't think risks the housing element. I, I don't propose to pull it, but I, I think it's comforting that this is not like, like the first, you know, Site A, which is two hundred and thirty-five. I've been worried if we're handling about that. Um, so the, the minimum density is sixteen, the maximum is forty. Uh, i- if I follow your questions with, with, um, uh, you know, our city attorney, it seems that we, it seems that we kind of gave away the high density and, and, and all the buy right without saying you need a grocery. We simply heard we're not going to do it and then McCabe then said we'll take forty. So that bothers me. And I think, I think I'd like to play a little bit of hardball. And, and I, I think that, that it's true, they're a business. I heard they have to earn, what was it, a million a month or, you know, some, I mean, there's, there's an economics here where this may or may not work. But I'd like to, you know, enter a negotiation where we're very serious about, you know, having this amenity and, and we're, you know, willing to, um, you know, give them that higher number if we get that. So that, that to me is the starting point in, in the negotiation. But I, I might be missing something here, there was, you know, there's a lot of conversation that I didn't capture.
All right, so, so just so I understand, the density, you're okay with the density if we get a grocery store, but if we don't get a grocery store, then what would you want? Would you want no housing there then?
Well, I would say sixteen.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
The obligation to make sure you have all the things to think about. Um, if you ever didn't get to review, uh, the, look at the Marine Country Mark or previously Larkspur Landing Shopping Center uh, approval documents, you'll see that there's a requirement for there to be a grocery store. That's it. What's, what is that? So I want you to take some care, the, the ten thousand to thirty thousand square feet number is partly selected to ensure a space that could be a grocery store. But there isn't a legal definition of grocery store. So as you march through this, think about that because we've had a lot of creative discussions over the years with the Marine Country Mark management about what fulfills that obligation. Um, and I, I hate to put staff through that exercise on another site because it's a very, it's very challenging.
Well, let me ask you, the, what was approved previously just said grocery store and then it had the, the square footage. Right, is that correct?
It encouraged a grocery store and said that size, which presumably creates some concept for the property and what you personally like. So I just want you to think about that because if you lift the size and you just say you want a grocery,
Okay.
we get back into this question of what does that mean?
Can, can I ask a question? If anybody knows the approximate square footage of something like Trader Joe's, is that ten thousand square feet?
Yes, it is.
Yeah.
Very close. Okay.
Um, all right, so, uh, I think more, more input on this.
Yeah, so I think the, the type, the place to put density is in that location and I don't want to reduce the density. It backs up against the Rose Lane condominiums, which are already three to four stories tall. Um, it would fit into that cluster very well. If, there's opportunities if we have a higher density to maybe create, um, something that's similar that the Vivalon campus was done, um, on Fourth Street in San Rafael. But it opens up our opportunities to create, um, affordable housing and, uh, senior housing if we don't limit the density in that area. Um, I, I think this is a reasonable number, um, to have there. I, I'm very, um, I, I hear your point about the grocery store and it's been bothering me all along, but we run the risk if we layer that on there, that, uh, Albertson's and the mega corporation that they are because we'll just walk away and leave that property. And we're going to have blight and we're going to have an issue where we don't get any housing in there. So we need housing and we need downtown corridor housing for our walkability for our seniors. And I think this is a good place to put it. It would be nice if we could put a layer to encourage a grocery, but I don't want to make it, um, a requirement else we'll lose. From their letter, they'll walk away and, and we'll lose any opportunity to put anything in there. But that's what I have read from their letter. They're, they are ready to negotiate with some developers to put in housing in that area, but they are unwilling to look at, um, having a requirement for grocery and they give all the reasons why it's not going to work in their bottom line. So I'm okay with the number that Elise has come up with on here.
All right, uh, other comments or I'll come back to this at the end or in a big package?
Yeah, just, just a question, um, so putting myself in the mind of Albertson's, they, they can actually just sell the ground lease or sell the property all, all together. So, I mean, it's possible, again, I, I, I'm wondering. You know, I, I, I appreciate your point, uh, Councilmember Way. I mean, I, I do think we, you know, a worst case scenario would be for it to be what it is now.
Yeah.
And that, that's a, that's a really good point. Um, and I also don't know the economics well enough to know what, you know, I mean, here we're playing with, with density numbers and staff has put a lot of thought into it. But, um, maybe I'll, I'll make it then a question back to, uh, you know, to, to staff as to what, you know, what are, i- i- is there any incentivization in the density or in any other aspect that you think might work?
That's a tough one to answer, I mean, without actually having a chance to engage the potential developers. But typically height is the first thing that a developer seeking to improve their interests in doing work for us. More units, less restrictions on affordability, these are all the things that come in to say, you know, if you can move these off the table, we might be more should talk about something maybe you want.
And the other thing is, is say we did do, you know, sixteen and Councilmember Way's scenario played out where they let the building sit, I mean, there's no reason two years that we couldn't amend the housing. And then perhaps that, that one, you know, site number, you know, and in the housing plan, you know, could we return to it and, and amend it two years down the road?
Well, you can come back to amend the housing element at a future date as long as you don't affect the re-enactments, you know, you can't amend the housing element in a negative way.
But this wouldn't be, we, if we said we were going to do sixteen and then it sits empty for two years, we come back and say it's forty. I mean, that's, that's a possibility, right?
Uh, I believe you could legally do that, yes.
Okay.
All right, let, let me move on to Bed Bath and Beyond. Um, uh, some comments, uh, were made about potentially, uh, the density is lower there than it could be. Um, is it, can you explain?
I'll let, I'll let Elise talk to Sky because I think I know the answer. I believe the speaker specifically talked it, and there were some questions about why not assign a density to the entire property. Uh, the property owner is very clear, there's no intention within the cycle of considering housing other than that, the Bed Bath and Beyond, the formal location of Bed Bath and Beyond. So I don't think it would be a realistic thing for the council to impose more across the entire site. Now, you want to get into specifics of what's in the plan for that specific location. I think that's within the realm of, of reasonableness presented to HCD.
So hypothetically, if, uh, we wanted to reduce the numbers on the Lucky Site and increase those numbers on the Bed Bath and Beyond Site, is that a legitimate option?
If you're dealing with the market rate numbers, I don't think you jeopardize your approval if it's, you know. Answer from Elise and Sky.
It would, one, which is one thought out since you, or at the end there, you were talking about going down to sixteen units to the acre. It's currently zoned for twenty-one units to the acre. Um, we, you thought sixteen would effectively be down zoning it, which we can't do.
I, I, I think we're talking about sixteen units on the Lucky Site.
Yeah, so, uh, Lucky Site is currently zoned, the current zoning for the Lucky Site allows twenty-one units to the acre.
Right, so if we had less units on the Lucky Site and increased the units on the Bed Bath and Beyond, that, that, Bed Bath and Beyond Site, would that, would you do that?
You'd be down zoning the Lucky Site, you would be upzoning another site, but HCD, one of the things they care a lot about is down zoning and even where you're shifting units to another site, they, they look very hard at whether or not you're act- whether the sites are comparable.
But even, even in market rate.
Yes, yes, I mean, where you're down zoning, the, 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 the shifting that, that we were talking about before had to do with where you're upzoning everything. If you want to move the net increase around at its market rate, that's probably going to be okay. In this particular situation, the existing zoning allows twenty-one units to the acre. If you take it down to sixteen, even where you're shifting those units to another site, HCD is going to look much more carefully at that and, and may well not agree with it.
And so I may have misunderstood earlier. I thought that because these were market rate, that we wanted to, you know, hypothetically just get rid of all the housing on the Lucky Site. It wouldn't be that big of an issue because they're market rate housing and we are over our numbers on market rate housing, so it shouldn't jeopardize.
I think staff may have misunderstood and thought you were talking about taking that forty at the top end down to some other number. I think staff may have misunderstood and thought you were talking about taking that forty at the top and down to some other number when we were talking earlier.
Okay, so so the answer is yes, it would jeopardize our approval if we got rid of market rate housing or moved it from one site to another.
If, yeah, I I think we may have misunderstood what you were saying before about the Lucky site is that that um you can, you could retain a current, like, current zoning that is commercial but allows for the twenty-one units to the acre. If you reduce it below twenty-one, even if we're talking about market rate because that's down zoning it from the current status quo, that is something that HCD would look at more carefully. One component of of being able to do that is shifting units to another site, but they actually do look at multiple factors between the two sites to ensure that that it's a reasonable trade-off.
So, Mr. Mayor. I'm I I'm uncomfortable with this um dissecting all these things because um at this point, because I really think our staff has done a tremendous amount of work with consultants, with public comment, with going to site visits, with meeting with the owners of these properties, with looking at the, what the rules are, and they have spent hundreds of hours coming up with this site list plan and the density requirements that are are suggested in here come from their professional expertise and also from the use of our consultants that were professional experts in this. And I respect that they, especially Elise and her team, have put in hundreds of hours to come up with these numbers and also following the rules that they know of HCD, which can be pretty draconian. Um, but they've been following them. They've been attending the seminars. They've been going back and forth with letters. And I'm not, I don't think um dissecting each of these is within our best interest. Um, because I trust that they have done a tremendous amount of work to get to this level of a plan. Um, and we are pushed against a wall for getting this submitted uh in an appropriate time or we are going to be um we're we're risking penalties and we're also risking developers coming in and just blasting through our rules because they can't if we don't have the rules set up. So, I mean, we can keep going through and and going through each of these, but I I'm feeling very um that we are not the experts in dissecting this as our staff has done, and I appreciate that our staff has spent a tremendous amount of time to come up with this.
Let me uh, let me agree that I think our staff has done a great job. Uh, let me disagree uh in the sense that I think it's our responsibility um as the the city council having a hearing on this, hearing public input, to take that public input seriously, to talk to staff to see if any of the public input can be implemented, to see if we want to implement it, and if we decide after going through it that, hey, you know what? We're going to stick with with what's here, you know, so be it. I think we can do that, but I also think we owe it to our constituents to hear what they have to say, consider what they have to say and to see if we agree with it. And we may disagree with everything that's been said and then so be it, but you know, I think we owe it to our constituents to to consider it.
But I, to that point though, I think it's clear when you read the staff report that there have been hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of comments submitted, answered over the course of the last couple of years from public meetings, from emails, from seminars. And there's a chart in here of of probably two hundred questions that were answered specifically reasons why, whether they were um made changes to the uh to the draft ordinance, et cetera. Our staff has listened to a lot of these comments and planning commissions listen to them. I'm fine with hearing, I mean, going through these, but I want people to know that there have been dozens of comments that have already been recognized by our staff and dealt with um and incorporated into this existing document. And a lot of comments tonight, if you read those documents, the 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 document of the questions and answers have already been covered by our staff. So I I we can continue going on. I just wanted to express that I thought um I don't want to second guess some of the tremendous work that's been done.
Okay, I appreciate that. And and there's only a couple more that I really want to go through, if that's okay. Uh, we had.
I was just going to make one suggestion.
Sure.
I think it would be the most efficient if the council identifies, for example, that you might want a different density on the Lucky site, that you leave that, it gives staff a chance, and then after you've done all the sites, we can give you, okay, to accommodate that, you don't need to do anything or you do need to do something, and then you can, rather than try to horse trade right now, maybe we could get through the whole list and then we'll, yeah, we'll give that perspective to you.
I I I heard you. Uh, let me, the next thing on my list, uh, Richard, uh, who owns Site E, I believe, uh, had said that he was uh willing and happy to increase the density on that site. Um, I wanted to ask staff if that was possible or if that had already been thought about and addressed in the smooth key proper density.
So sixty-five dwellings an acre was suggested because the city has an inclusionary housing requirement that requires up to twenty percent affordable. Developers do have the option to pay a fee in lieu of providing that housing, but we want to encourage people to provide the housing. If they provide the housing according to the state density bill, under the state density bonus law, they're entitled to additional market rate units. So for um, under sixty-five units an acre, the site's entitled to fifty-three units. The city would require ten units of very low income housing and three moderate income units. And with that, the project would be entitled to an additional twenty-seven additional units of housing, uh which take them to eighty units. So what we're proposing encourages them to develop the affordable housing under inclusionary zoning ordinance and then assumes they're going to take advantage of the density that's allowed under state law when they do that.
Got it. So so what I'm hearing is staff has already considered this and based on, you know, their analysis, this is the optimum number uh based on the bonus units that they can get.
That they still get what they want, which is sixty units of market plus additional units to cover the affordable housing that's required under the inclusionary zoning ordinance. Okay.
I appreciate that. Uh, does council have any comments or questions on that? Okay, uh, I am uh just about done with the comments that I had. Um, are there other notes or comments that uh anyone in council has had that they want to address?
Hi, Mr. Mayor. I had one. Um, one gentleman was talking about sites J and K when they were added. And so it's Mr. President.
Yeah.
Oh, I haven't asked, have we asked about?
Right, can we, can we just take clarification as they were adding?
We received a comment in December of twenty twenty-three suggesting those sites, they were added to the April twenty twenty-four draft of the housing element, which was posted online in the library. We sent notification out to people on our mailing list about that. And then it was submitted to HCD on May first of twenty twenty-four. So it's, those units have been on the plans this this year essentially.
Does.
But the only public hearing on any of those drafts was the last planning commission hearing.
Uh, so remember, Andre, is it, as you're.
Yeah, I I was just asking, yeah. One other question. When we post these documents in April or whenever that was, I mean, is that widely circulated or?
No, I mean, no, we notified the people that were on like the 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 housing element list to be notified. But no, it wasn't, some of, I think maybe some, the earlier drafts were, but not there's, since there was four or five drafts, we weren't putting them in every um like city manager newsletter and things like that.
Okay. I might recommend perhaps in the future that we maybe put in the city manager newsletter or you know, somewhere prominent on our website, on our city website, so people can get it. Because I don't think I, I don't think I was aware that those have been posted.
Well, we do have that op, that option to notify me button on, so you can get notifications automatically for certain things like planning commissions and library information. So people can always register on our website under the notify me and um you'll get instant or or um emails regularly about things.
And if I could, I am going to reopen the public comment for one second. We have a gentleman, I think, who may have uh asked this question. Let me set the timer for thirty seconds. What do you got?
Yeah, just clarifying, the neighborhood that would be most impacted by that, the first notification we got was three weeks ago. Um, so again, you have the petition that was sent to you. Um, I think that's one of the areas that we need at least like additional times for public discussion. Again, there's twenty-plus neighbors that have already signed on with various concerns. And I think if we give reasonable time like we have for every other site on the list, that would probably grow pretty dramatically.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. Uh, closing public comments. Um, and I think we do have city policy of of where we give the notices that we follow for all of these. Was this an exception? Did?
That's something. So only publication was required for this hearing, so we didn't have to send any notices out, but some of them was a courtesy. They um, I'm not sure why they only received a correct, like a later notice to the planning commission hearing because uh but we did send out a corrected notice because there was an error in the first one. Um, and they're also residents of the unincorporated area of Green Rock Marin, which I don't know if that makes a difference to them subscribing to normal channels of information, but um but they would still get the, I, the mail notice still went out to them when we mailed to three hundred feet of those sites.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, you got your mic on. Sarah. We followed all our policies, procedures and legal requirements, but you know, from time to time, we hear from folks that they feel they didn't get a quick notice, but the staff's very diligent about following not only the law, but
Okay, so so I'm going to ask, you know, moving forward, um, you know, that if you'd like to communicate with staff and then you know, work on making sure everyone gets the notice that that uh, you know, to make things go smoother, I don't have a problem with that. However, due to the time sensitivity on this issue, I'm not going to be able to continue it uh so that uh more people can can get noticed. I think you know, the the legal notice requirements were bad and we do need to make some decisions today. Um, so having said that, any other comments on that issue? See?
Just the other second question on that was moving it.
Okay, so uh, again, I can ask people not to just shout out from their seats. Um, everything has to be on record at the microphone. Um, I will ask a hypothetical question. Can we remove that? I think uh it's probably, I probably would not be in favor of that at this point because of the effect it's going to have on the state approving our housing element. But I will put that to staff and maybe in staff's opinion.
You know, I I did notify the planning commission that these sites, because they have few units, uh one is they're only on the the list for, let's see, we've got one for, one is at sixteen, one is for eight, and so that it's not increasing. It's not, they're not critical to the housing element. They do provide an opportunity for housing adjacent to the single-family neighborhood of the Greenberry Hills, which, but there's also other multifamily in that neighborhood too. Um, so you could remove it. You could also consider just keeping the existing density at twenty-one units an acre, believing it on the housing element list. The the issue with um twenty-one units acres, um that we did talk to someone, I believe, from Five Elevens or Francis Street, that um I think expressed concern that that wasn't enough housing to make it feasible to develop the sites for sale for eight million dollars. So I think that having a higher density, I'm not sure if the density proposed, it's not enough to make it feasible, but it's at least more of an incentive to develop the for housing. But if if you do nothing, it's already zoned for housing at twenty-one units an acre with um the requirement for mixed uses, unless they find a way to get around the mixed use part. And then you have the other option of leaving it in, but not increasing the density over twenty-one units acre. Or anything else you want to suggest?
Okay, uh, bring it back to council. Any comments?
Sorry, just to clarify that, um, at least the so the status quo is that J and K are already allowed for twenty-one?
Um, nine, yeah, twenty-one units an acre, which would be nineteen units total between the sites.
Right, so so the only, by keeping in, the only modification is to allow the maximum to go to twenty-five, twenty, sorry, thirty-five.
Correct.
Okay. Which which is, I guess, from your analysis, you know, something that will increase likelihood.
The likelihood of development housing.
Four out of eleven.
Because as the sites get smaller, those densities are more important because the units get smaller.
Okay.
And the sites have been vacant for a long time.
Which, I mean, I'll I'll say in all honesty, you know, having read the petition and all the, you know, findings there, I I, you know, I I couldn't understand, you know, the impact of those, you know, possibly twenty-eight units, you know, really brought out of it pretty well. So I I submit that it's not a big part of our element, but I I didn't quite see why it needed to be.
Any other comments on this issue?
Well, I would be in favor in of keeping it in, but at a lower density. Or at the, at the existing density, sorry. Yeah.
Okay, so let's uh, are any other comments that need to be addressed that I did not address? Anybody has in their notes that they would like to address at this point? No? Okay, so none. Let's get to the final part of this is how we're going to wrap this up. So I'll give uh, I guess I'll give some comments and open it up to everybody else and get their comments. Um, I am unhappy with the parking at TAM. I think it is horrible already and they don't want to make doors. Um, I am encouraged that if they take away the parking, that they would have to uh provide replacement parking to our satisfaction. So that gives them some, some comfort. Um, it sounds like we're at a point where we really can't take that out of this element because that would drastically affect uh how the state's going to look at it. Uh, and it sounds like, I don't know, we have a whole lot of options because of state law other than to require them to replace any parking you take away. So I think we're kind of stuck with that as my analysis. Uh, the Lucky site, I I don't care if they don't put any house there. I I'm I'm fine tying it to a grocery store as long as we make the definition clear that, you know, staff is satisfied. Um, and if somebody choose, you know, the Albertson chooses not to do anything with it, you know, they own the property, they're going to be losing money even in vacant. I think they're incentivized to either sell it to somebody who wants to do something with it. They want to develop some other commercial stuff. I don't think we're any worse off not having those units, you know, in the downtown.
A lot of units should truly give up.
I I, that's that's my perspective, you know. Twenty, twenty-eight units is my perspective. And uh I think tho- those were were uh seem to be the issues I felt strongly and strongly about. And I am opening it up to whoever has comments or whatever.
Um, yes, I mean, the Lucky's, you know, having been the one we talked about the most. Really appreciating all the comments. I I I think I was wrong. You know, if it's twenty-one, we can go to sixteen. I I was meaning just to hold the lower one and allow for the forty if there's, you know, some concession. I I I feel pretty strongly about that. I also think the number of units is twenty-eight out of eleven thirty-seven. It's not, doesn't seem to be a major part.
I'd say eighty-six. Where do you get twenty?
The total capacity.
That's all right.
The last, last one.
Yeah, the last, the maximum allowed would be eighty-six. All right.
Right, well, actually, that that's a question to staff. I've been looking at both columns. Which should we be bringing on for, you know, our decision? I mean, we're trying to reach. I, to me, the last column seemed to be what, you know, our reasonable expectation of development is. You know, not, not what a pro forma. So so is that correct?
So uh, just to clarify, yes, the 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 density, the the maximum density being if it were a four-reed dwelling units acre, if you wanted to maximize everything, but get you maybe six. It's just been earmarked in the housing element specifically for twenty-eight or above moderate income based on the realistic capacity of that site.
Okay. Okay, so that's, it's a bit of an error bar, but but okay, it's it's a fair number of units. I can see that. I mean, let me just take one step back. Um, I want to say what I really do like is that of the VAX number, you know, to the two seven hundred or transalians. I mean, I I want to, again, thanks staff. I think, you know, we're kind of dealing with the community concern here and a parking issue there, but by and large, I feel good about this and and where this is headed. Um, you know, and I think the downtown area will undergo change because it's not just Lucky's, it's the Racket Club. It's the, you know, King of Roll, it's, it's, you know, five fifty-seven. So there's going to be other possibilities. I I think, you know, uh, council member Andre really articulated something that's been bugging all of us. I mean, we know this is a concern. I really appreciate your pragmatic approach. You know, we can cater to every need. I really appreciate your pragmatic approach, you know, we catered every need, I'm willing to, you know, push a little bit harder in the negotiations, so I'm leaning towards. Saying, look, he gets, you get twenty-one, but, you know, this was also. You know, to what you were saying about a lot of times they put in, um, I, I believe that some of these, the letter in the negotiation, what the planning commission came up with. Was really in the last few weeks, so it's to be still something worth negotiating, it's not been. Settled for a year and a half, like many other elements, so to keep the house, you know, part of the housing element. So, so, I mean, that's my main issue, otherwise, I think I'm good with this.
So I can. Just re, re-articulate that, you're, you're wanting with this Albertson site, still keep in the brochure environment? Is that what I understood you'd say? That's not, okay. It's not gonna fly over them, and I don't think we, um, I, I think we're gonna jeopardize an entire opportunity if we do that, and we'd encourage it. Because we all like it, but to require it, they already said. That it's a no game for them, to require it.
Okay, and let me make sure of understanding, when you say requirement, it's required in order to get the buy right.
Yeah.
Probably, it's not required.
Yeah, tell them to do it.
Right, it says the requirement, we're just mentioning instead. If you wanna be streamlined through the process, you have to do what our community wants you to do, otherwise, you're just treated like anybody else, you can still. Build, you know, you can still have the residence, and just don't get the streamlined process like.
Is that, is that how that works? In the buy right situation?
That, that was how the, the, how that, the, the, the special standards for site end were set up. In the housing element prior to the planning commission, so that. Um, the twenty-one units to the acre would become buy right if they included a ten thousand, thirty thousand square foot grocery store. Plus some standards around parking and, um, uh, uh. The, um, delivery vehicles.
So, so in the sense of, you know, uh, councilway, it doesn't sound like we're overturning. All the hours, hundreds of hours of public comment, it's really almost like we got planning commission, you know, appeal that we're overturning, that's more how it seems.
You've been dealing with that corporation, any feedback on that idea? I mean, I, I know Elise has to, has, um, has to accuse herself because of her remnants, but. Any feedback that is public that we could know about?
What you're deliberating on is whether or not, what the, so the buy right standard is essentially. Reducing the governmental regulation, right, so, what you're deliberating is where you wanna set. The density that allows the streamlined process versus the, the, what would be a more typical or traditional process. Um, I think if you had a room for developers here, they would tell you that's a cost. It's a cost in time and money, and, um, so my answer would be you're making a decision to impose some amount of time and cost. Any potential potential, and I can't tell you what any individual property owner thinks about. Their options versus that time and cost.
Uh, let me ask council member Andre, um, so I know you're kind of a one-ended inspection on this one, does that. Satisfy your requirements if we were to say, you know, you only get the streamlined buy right process if you put in. And we go back to what would, it was before the planning commission, which is you have to put in a grocery store between ten thousand and thirty thousand square feet. If you do that, you get the buy right provisions streamlined, if you don't, you still put housing in, but you gotta treat it like everybody else.
Yes, I, yes, I agree with that, um. I would always say that the grocery store, the ten thousand and thirty thousand is a very large space. Um, a typical Trader Joe's is about ten thousand, a nugget's probably like fifteen, I mean, thirty thousand is, is large, so I think. If we want to make it more palatable, maybe we say buy right, but the grocery store is, I don't know, seven thousand and fifteen thou, or something, um.
I, I don't think the top number really matters, it's the bottom number, that's why I'm saying Trader Joe's is a pretty small grocery store. You know, so I'm trying to think, I, I mean, we could reduce it, we know, you know, we think is, is in the community's best interest if we wanna make it seventy-five hundred square feet. If you think, but again, the, the challenge is that there's not a definition of the grocery store. So unless we want to define grocery store. Our definition is based on size. Right, so, uh, and I would ask staff, uh, in, in Sky, I guess this would be a huge question, is there a legal definition of a grocery store? That we can just refer to and say grocery store as defined in, you know, code section, blah, 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 you know, or something like that, so that, uh. Somebody's not gonna come in and sell bicycles and say it's a grocery store.
I'm just doing a quick search of, uh, the existing municipal code. Think we have in use that, that is food and beverage retail sales, um, that include, but that includes more than just a grocery store. Um, but we don't think we have any existing, I don't think. We can, we can, what we could do is, um. We're gonna have to bring back some trailing zoning after tonight, anyway, we could, we could add a definition of grocery store to the municipal. I, I think that's very good, so, so why, why don't we do that, why don't we say a grocery store, and then we'll define a grocery store. Uh, and as long as we're defining grocery store, I don't have a problem reducing it to seventy-five hundred square feet, as long as I know that they're meeting the community's needs of selling. Food and whatever, you know, people make, um, uh, is that more free? Okay, so seventy-five hundred square feet, comfortable?
Sure.
All right, Catherine, I know you're, I'm not, I'm feeling over yet, but it's.
Oh, I mean, how important is it? I just look, I'm, they, I'm looking at the reality of what this corporation said they're gonna not do, they're, they will or won't do, and. Um, I, I think we need to be realistic about that, because they can just leave it as an abandoned grocery store for forever if they want to.
They could, but their incentive is not to do that, so they're losing money, right, they would rather either sell it or lease it, they don't wanna just.
I don't know about that, if you've been following the grocery industry, it's an enormous antitrust situation that's going on, and these mergers, and. Anyway, that's more than this, but just to be clear, if we add something like that and make it a buy right. If they say, forget it, we're not gonna do a grocery store, we're just gonna go through the regular development process, they saw that option of doing that.
They do, yeah.
It's just not a streamlined process.
It's just not a streamlined.
So they, they could market their property with that caveat that it's recommended to have a grocery store. If you're gonna, um, do the streamlining, but you can buy this property and you don't have to put in a grocery store if you follow all the other rules. That's correct, yeah, okay, well.
Okay, so, other than that one change, is there anything else that anybody would like to change before we maybe accept a motion? Seeing none, can I get a motion?
Yeah, I'll move to, uh, it's gonna be a lot to me. Um, so, uh, I think we're moving for the adoption of the twenty forty general plan. And this is, uh, with the twenty, uh, twenty-three, thirty-one housing element.
Actually, if you could, the first action should be to adopt the resolution certifying the, the EIR, which is resolution sixty-one slash twenty-four.
So I'll make that motion to, uh, adopt the, uh, the EIR.
Uh, can I get a second?
Second.
We get a roll call.
Councilmember Paulson?
Yes.
Councilmember Andre?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Way?
Yes.
Mayor Handel?
Yes. Okay, um, city manager, what, what's your next step, or, or, or city attorney, someone? What, what would you like our next motion to be, sir?
Uh, the next, the next motion would be to adopt resolution sixty-two slash twenty-four, to adopt the twenty forty general plan and twenty twenty-three, twenty thirty-one housing element. With, um, any changes necessary to reflect the reversion for site N in that, which is the Lucky site, um, to have the provision of. So that the density would, residents density would be twenty-one units to the acre, uh, but with the incentive to have buy right development if, um. Uh, if they include a grocery store of seventy-five hundred, at least seventy-five hundred square feet. And there are two additional provisions there related to parking and, um, and. Um, operations of delivery vehicles that we pick up from the pre, from the last version of the housing.
Would somebody like to make that motion?
Well, well said. Whatever he said, I'll make a motion.
Second, okay, can we, uh, get a roll call on that motion, please?
Councilmember Paulson?
Yes.
Councilmember Andre?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Way?
Yes.
Mayor Handel?
Yes. Mister city attorney, is there another motion we need related to this?
I think we're done with these, but did you already cover the zone, the ordinances? Okay, so, we still actually need to get to the two ordinances, I think there's a brief staff report about them.
Let's see it.
Urgency ordinance.
The urgency ordinance and the regular.
The next item is the ordinances that would implement the general plan, or certain programs in the general plan. And the housing element, and so we're proposing that you introduce an urgency ordinance, as well as a standard ordinance, so that the. Ordinances could take effect immediately on adoption, and then, um, the standard ordinance would take effect after it's. Adopted at the next meeting, and then thirty, or thirty days following its adoption, which could happen at the next meeting, um. So the visions of the current draft that you have. Reflect the density that was in the housing elements, so provisions of that ordinance would need to be. Modified, and it sounds like, um, to be reverted back to the prior draft that the planning commission considered. Um, at least as it relates to the one site.
To the site N.
And maybe the city attorney can help with that.
I'd be happy to talk with me, with a motion when it comes to that time.
Okay, um. Can we make a motion or is there?
You can fill a comment, I'll forward that as well.
Okay, uh, is there public comment on the urgency ordinance?
Or the regular ordinance?
Or the regular ordinance, would that matter?
Which one's the regular, I'm sorry.
That's ten seventy-eight.
Yeah, which one's the regular?
They're nearly identical, the regular ordinance includes. Some additional provisions related to the open space, open space rezoning that's directed by the general plan. And the urgency ordinance doesn't have the open space rezoning.
And the regular ordinance is ten seventy-nine, it just comes in, in your packet, it's just immediately after ten seventy-eight. But they, they are almost identical, except for those, those features that Elise just described.
Okay, is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on either of those ordinances? Is there anyone on council that would like to comment on either of those ordinances?
Just, just a quick, uh, technical question, essentially, this is. Um, kind of streamlining the implementation, you know, I mean, this is to bring everything. Into alignment with what we just passed in seventy-one.
Right, though, there would be, it would need to be amended slightly, that city attorney can help amend it.
So it's not really, you know, that content substance where we go, this is more procedural.
There, there, these actions would not make any substantive changes different from what he, the council just approved in, um. Adopting the general plan update in the housing element. What the two ordinances do is make changes to the zoning code to, to actually, um, implement the policy changes that are reflected in the housing. So that the, so the zoning ordinance actually aligns with the, the entirety of the general plan, as an end.
Uh, can I get a motion for those two ordinances going up together?
Oh, like one at a time?
Uh, one at a time, and just would reflect that for both of them, um, they will include changes to, um. The, uh, provisions for site N, um, to, uh, allow for streamlined, uh, review. Of, uh, of an application that includes, um. Um, a, a, a grocery store that is at least seventy-five hundred square feet and has the parking requirements and operational requirements for delivery vehicles. That were in the previous version of the, um, housing element that was considered by the planning commission, and staff will make, uh, conforming changes to the documents.
Can I get a motion for the urgency ordinance, please?
I'll move ordinance ten seventy-eight as outlined by the city attorney.
Have a second.
We roll call.
Councilmember Paulson?
Yes.
Councilmember Andre?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Way?
Yes.
Mayor Handel?
Yes. Motion passes, uh, can I get a motion for the non-urgency ordinance or the regular ordinance that we called?
Yes, and it will, it would include the same change for site N.
Okay, so moved, uh, to, uh, um, moved to pass ordinance ten seventy-nine.
Can I get a second?
One second.
Can I get a roll call?
Councilmember Paulson?
Yes.
Councilmember Andre?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Way?
Yes.
Mayor Handel?
Yes. Okay, uh, is there anything else with, uh, the public hearings that we need to do, mister city manager, city attorney? Yes, this just closes out, are we done with those two?
I believe we are.
Okay, uh, upon request, let's take a five-minute bio break and come back for the business items, okay? Thank you. Okay, we are back on the record, uh. And we are on the business items. Uh, let's go to eight point one, Lawrenceford Rent Review Board Composition, can we get a staff report?
Yes, mister mayor, we have a direction from the council to prepare some modifications to the ordinance governing our. Rental protections that were requested by one of our landlords, uh, to, uh, deal with issues around, um, being sure that. Tenants have to help landlords comply with directions from safety and, uh, insurance, and we realized, oh, this is timely. Because we have a potential other amendment, let's go ask the council what they may or may not want to do, so that we bring it all in one package. So this item is essentially seeking your direction with respect to this. Secondary issue that's come up, which is we're having a hard time finding people to join the rent review board. To volunteer, we have five people so far in the community that meet the, uh, qualifications that were set up to. Uh, be on the rent review board, but we don't have enough applicants within the composition that the ordinance talks about, so the ordinance says. That there shall be two tenants, two property owners who lease property, uh, lease residential property, and then one person who does not fit out of those. Categories, um, and what we have in terms of an applicant floor right now is. One tenant, one person who leases residential property, and three folks who don't fit the category, so. Um, we wanted to find out from you if you'd be interested in us, uh, amending the composition at the board, uh. Or if you want us to just keep trying to find applicants to fill the compositions that was adopted. Uh, and just two off-the-cuff suggestions that we have, one would be to just open it up to try to get five people, but. We recognize that might create questions of fairness and balance that the original composition was supposed to make, so another option, I mean. Combination of, uh, any five people, as long as the balance of tenant and, uh. So landlord is equal, which is actually what we have in the current applicant pool, so. Um, we're seeking some direction this evening, if you'd like us to combine that with the other ordinance change we're breaking. For your next meeting.
Okay, so let me, uh, ask, uh, council, first of all, any questions for staff? Okay, any thoughts on, uh, the change suggested, or the potential changes suggested by staff?
Well, I'll start, I, I think, um, my, my main concern would just be that if we open it up. We won't know, I, if, you know, the ordinance originally said two of each. And then one person who was neither, and I think that was set up for, for fairness reasons, and so if we open it up to three people who. Are neither, then it's sort of, you know, how do we screen for fairness, and I, I don't know how we, because we're the ones who would have to interview. You know, to make the appointments, like, I, I don't know how we would screen for that, uh, bias. For bias, yeah, I, I, I think it'd be difficult to screen for bias, it's, it's my, it's my personal opinion, and how would you, yeah, because people would say. Whatever, you know, whatever they wanna say, um, and anyways, I, I just worry about that, and then. And then, you know, what happens is, the appeals board makes a decision, something comes out that one of them was biased, and then we, you know. Be sued for something, I mean, I don't know, but that's sort of, that's my concern, is just bias, and how do we screen for it if we decide to take the categories away, um.
That, that, that makes sense, I mean, I, I like, uh, staff's second recommendation, which is as long as there's an equal number of. Uh, renters and owners, uh, that, whether it's one-one or two-two. I think that's giving us the fairness that we need, I know you, the people who are neither, um. Is a little more challenging, but they're gonna be the decision makers anyway. If it's two and two, you have that one person who's gonna be the, the, the tiebreaker. That has to be neutral, if it's one-one, and three people were the tiebreakers. Um, I'm comfortable with it, as long as we have equal numbers on both sides, you know, it's. Um, I'm comfortable with it as long as we have equal numbers on both sides, you know, it's uh but again, I'm open to you know, other thoughts or things.
Is there a a third-party vendor who can do this type of of um arbitrating or the board? Is there a third-party vendor that does this? I mean, we're having a hard time recruiting people to do this, and that'll probably be a consistent problem.
That was an option that the council had before it during its deliberations, but ultimately, the council wanted there to be some sort of board to secure the peace. You could change that direction.
Are there other jurisdictions within our county that share a board, maybe, like who also have an ordinance like this?
Uh the only other jurisdiction with the rent stabilization ordinance in place, it's like this is Fairfax and the council is getting a board.
Because there's uh one one additional question is, a couple of the public letters or letters that came in in regards to this um are concerned about financial data and access by individuals like regular um residents who may sit on this to sensitive financial data. How do we keep a firewall for that? Or do we?
That's a good answer.
Yeah, I just wondered.
Question.
I mean, any tenant who's who's a member of the board is going to see any data that's submitted as part of the the appeal. Uh there's no avoiding that, but I think we can um try to create some parameters for limiting um other public release of the data. Um there are exceptions under the Public Records Act for um proprietary and um competitive data that that a business is required to submit to a government agency uh for regulatory reasons. So we can we can craft a policy that that protects that from more general public release, but um any tenant who's on the board has to be able to see the financial data that's submitted.
If we did use a third-party vendor, would that be a way to secure um financial data to a third-party vendor as opposed to like multiple residents?
Uh you mean, have a uh somebody to adjudicate appeals other than the board?
I mean, remember, this is the appeal process. So the question really that's more germane to the question you're asking in some of the comments is what's public record in the prior part of the process, which is the part where there's a staff determination? So I think the question really that you may want to think about it and perhaps give us some direction to to sky, I mean, is to work on a policy around what constitute a public document, but what constitute a public document in that initial submission.
I I I would assume uh certain data is confidential, even though, you know, it's a hearing with with the staff. You know, somebody uses their security number, you're not going to put that in a in a public record. So I assume we have the ability to redact certain information and I would imagine are that can be somebody's personal finances.
But remember what these submissions are. We're maybe getting a little confused about what this is. This this is a landlord, a property owner, wants to exceed the rent cap. And so they they've submitted an application to exceed the rent cap. And they're required to provide their argument for why they need to do that to achieve fair return. And so the submission, the data, the information is not tenant information. It is the information that came from the property owner to make the case that they should be allowed to exceed the rent cap. And then that goes through a process, which ultimately results in the city manager making an determination. It's the way the ordinance is written. And then.
And I'm sorry, before you go on, when they submit that, is that public record?
Well, I think that's what I'm hearing. You might want us to bring a different agenda items to talk about.
Right, because I think if a property owner, you know, has confidential information that they want to share, but yet they don't want to be public, they should have a right to uh appeal without having to disclose certain things they don't want to disclose.
Yeah, and I I I think that there's a good argument just under the Public Records Act that that the city would be justified in withholding that from the public. Any decision maker is going to need to review it as part of making a decision, but I think that it would be helpful to have a policy declaration by the city council um establishing that as part of that process, the information's going to be reviewed and considered by the decision makers, but not available to the public.
Can I also ask, is it possible uh for staff to just let us know approximately the if we wanted to uh have a third party do this, what the cost would be to the city?
Not something we've explored, so I don't know.
What the heck can I say about that? Can I ask, you know, as kind of question for staff moving forward instead of crossing this bridge right now? I don't I don't feel comfortable uh farming out to a third party if you don't know what the cost should be. Can can we get some information on that, put it on the calendar, you know?
Well, it might be worthwhile to part the whole discussion until after the November election, because it may all be very and we have yet to receive an application for to exceed the rent cap. So we haven't had to process anything yet.
Okay, so um are we comfortable then um? So so right now, we don't have a review board because it doesn't meet our qualifications. So the question is, what are we doing as of now? Since we have no appeals, are we comfortable taking this down the road or?
At this point, given it's September, we probably could just sit tight and wait and see what happens in November.
Okay.
Cross, you know, keep our fingers crossed that uh uh property owner doesn't come into City Hall tomorrow urgently seeking the ability to exceed the rent cap.
And and if a property owner did come in, uh are there, is there anything in the regulations that requires to act quickly that we wouldn't be able to bring it to council and and make a decision when that happens?
We could probably, the time it would take us to commission and do the analysis of this application would be sufficient to come back.
Anyone on council object to continuing this July election?
Yeah, no, I think that's I think I think that's fine. I I think we should still try to recruit, though, if we can. I know it's.
Well, let's just keep listening and see if anybody applies.
That's what I mean, keep listening.
But I I I think the this privacy issue is something that we should talk about. Um so if if it's possible, I hopefully if it doesn't take too many hours, um just to get an idea of what would be the cost if we wanted to have a third party do this. Is it possible for staff to just come back and kind of ballpark so we can make it?
So I think first we'll we'll make a few phone calls. I mean, our ordinance isn't entirely made up. There's several cities that we drew from them, so we'll see what they're doing and what their experiences and that'll help inform us.
Uh any other comments from council? Staff have been of direction, thank you. Okay, uh let's uh close.
Mr. Mox is our last, yes. And this is your issue.
Yes. Let's let's close business item eight point one and let's open business item eight point two. Discussion about the use of Zoom for taking public comment. We get a staff report.
Uh yes, Mr. Mayor, one of your previous meetings, you uh had indicated a desire to to revisit whether or not to uh have Zoom public comment. Um and uh in discussing the new experience specifically, I think you had some valid questions that we hadn't really addressed, which is what happens if we experience another Zoom bombing? So um the council may all recall, the public may not, and they may not want to go see the viral language uh on the video when we got Zoom bombed. Um but essentially, the uh I advise the council, uh we use a technique to essentially say we're constraining the amount of public comment we're going to take, which is your right to do. And you did that to sort of curtail the opportunity for the Zoom bombers to keep saying the things that they were saying uh into public comment. Um and that's a technique that some cities are electing as have chosen to continue to allow the commenter who's zoomed in. Another technique I thought was actually a little easier if I showed you visually, which uh we have a neighbor that uses this other technique, which is Corvada Dara. So I'm hoping someone, you know, you know that, you know that cue that? Um I tried really hard to give you a clip of what Corvada Dara did where I was able to splice out. So we didn't have to listen to anything live. So um in the clip, if we can get it up, you'll see how they are choosing to handle it. Then I'll explain what happens in the meeting afterward. Um so uh take a pause for a section.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Make sure the volume is ready. Um so what has just happened is that uh this is a court mayor council meeting was past December. Uh they just had the first speaker uh make viral statements. And so um they muted the speaker and um they've adopted a a procedural policy that you're going to see what the mayor does and then I'll explain what happened subsequently and how to handle it after that.
Okay, make it up. And there is words before. There might be some ugly feedback for a second, okay, as the two things sink between our recording device and going to the power.
Okay, before you play, I did want to say there's going to be a brief moment where the Zoom bomber gets on the mic and quotes a couple of websites. Don't go visit the websites. Well, so it didn't work. Sorry, this is the probably the remote. Could I know we could have done this quickly in our council chamber. Uh what Mayor Beckman, the mayor at the time, Mike Beckman's doing is he has a prepared statement that essentially um it explains to everyone in the audience and online that the town of Corvada Dara has adopted uh policy that one, um they only allow public comment that's constructive to the discussion at hand. And two, uh they don't allow uh discrimination in their workplace. And what they've done is, and it's a pretty extensive statement, simple to make it. What they've essentially done is define somebody as part of the workspace. So um so they they use that as a justification to stop the Zoom bomber. But then uh they're obligated to have issued that as a warning and then invite the speaker to resume comment um in in the hopes that the speaker will be constructive. Um in this instance, if we were watching this video, uh the speaker chooses not to be constructive and starts to quote websites that he wants people to visit. So then the mayor uh cut the speaker off again and said, I issued you a warning. You're done. Uh then this town attorney makes an announcement that um we've issued a warning to everyone here. We've issued a warning to everyone online. And the mayor now has the ability to cut off the speaker and they don't get a second chance. So then the town council goes through three or four subsequent speakers who are all able to say a few viral bits with the mayor. Mutes them and cuts them off. So that's that's kind of the other technique that in some flavor is in practice to deal with this. So if you want to resume Zoom commentary, I do think the mayor's raised the point that we should have a plan or we should have a plan on how we're going to deal with. Um and I know there are members of the public who don't think it will happen again. Um there's enough evidence that this is an online thing happening around the country, not all the, these are not necessarily people in our community. Um and I I feel confident whether it's one day, one month, one year, at some point, it will be our turn again. And, you know, this is partly a question for the council, sort of, does the value you see in the online public comments outweigh the Zoom bombing experience?
So let let me ask our city attorney a question. Somebody calls up and you can public comment, you can comment on anything that's not on the agenda. Somebody calls calls in and says, you know what? I think slavery is awesome. And they very respectfully talk about whatever they want to talk about. And it's very offensive, you know, because it we it just is it's offensive or immoral. So then we block their content, content, it could be censor them because we don't agree with what they're saying. I mean, I I don't understand how we can legally do that.
I think that the theory, uh because I've read the the guidance that was prepared for the for the town of Corvada Dara, and I believe their theory is that um the um framework under the First Amendment um for a city council meeting means that um the content, um even if it's unrelated to an item on the agenda, it needs to be something that is related to city business. Uh and um and if it's not supporting um the the functions of the city, that they can warrant somebody and if they can can continue, they can then then stop them from from participating. Um, I it I understand the the case law that underlies that viewpoint. It's simply untested um with regard to this particular issue. Um I think the contrary view is the one that I've shared with the council. I know that it's one that um you know, there's not consensus among the public agency attorneys in Marin County or around the state on this issue, but I I do think that there is reason to be concerned that um a court would um view preventing people from um making a speech comments during general public comment at a city council meeting is viewpoint discrimination um that that is prohibited under the First Amendment. Again, it is untested. Um the the views that I had expressed in previous meetings about it are premised in part on risk reduction. Where to me, if you 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 sort of spin this out under um uh section nineteen eighty-three of the United States Code, which is the provision of law that um allows somebody to bring a civil rights case, which this would be because the allegation would be that it's a violation of the First Amendment. It is an important factor in risk assessment that the prevailing party is entitled, that if if the plaintiff prevails, they are entitled to attorney's fees. So even if the court awards them no damages, um because the court views the um the act of speech limitation to be de minimis, they can still make a claim for attorney's fees. And so um to me, I wanted to make sure that when we we evaluated this issue in the past, that the council understood that it's not just the risk of um of the case itself, it is the risk of attorney's fees and what is the value where since we are in an area where there is not clear case law um and there are there are valid arguments on both sides, what is the value to the city of allowing the comments via Zoom versus the potential risk to the city of um a significant attorney's fees award against it? Bearing in mind that so far, there haven't been any meaningful cases brought against against California jurisdictions on this issue despite the threats. So is there a real risk or simply a theoretical one? Uh it's hard to say at this point, but I I I don't I I I I understand, again, I want to acknowledge that there's a diversity of opinion among legal practitioners in this area, even within Marin County. But I do want council to bear in mind the risks that are associated with it in full. And then factor in is or is how significant, how how likely is the is the downside risk?
And just so I understand, um if we get or we have Zoom bombers and one person comes and says whatever they're going to say. And if we are being as legally conservative, so we don't censor their speech because we're, you know, make it suit for for censor their speech, we let them have their uh whatever it is, their their minute, and then we end public comment for the day. That would be legally fine, wouldn't it? Right?
As long as um the mayor at the time has also capped the total amount of time for public comment, yes. I mean, that is that that is fairly well established at this point that the mayor has discretion under the Brown Act and related case law to limit both the amount of time for individuals, each individual speaker, and the total amount of time allocated to public.
So if we're doing like thirty minutes of speaker and somebody comes up and starts, you know, doing whatever they're doing, we would not be able to cut them off for that thirty minutes. But at the end of that three minutes, we can say, okay, we're going to end public comment right now. Um and we're going to move on to other items. Is that accurate? Yes. All right, so uh I I I wanted to bring this because I I know James and and several other people, you know, like being able to comment on my, and I get it. And I appreciate it. I want community involvement. I I I cherish our our community to be able to share their opinions with us. My concern is that because of Zoom, we're opening up to people outside our community. And you get people from Texas or wherever they are. You know, just all they do is call different city councils and spew hate, you know? And I do not believe that legally we can cut, cut them off, you know, when they start spewing hate. Because I think that would be violation of their free speech rights. So, and I know it's questionable about, you know, different lawyers that get it differently. I think we'd be vulnerable. We could sue, we could lose. So I think what we're really talking about is the, the downside. If one person does that, we suffer through it for three minutes. And then we end public comment. You know? Is that horrible? No, it's kind of, you know, icky, you know, but is it the end of the world? No. Or we don't have public. Uh, I, you know, on Zoom. And, and let me, let me ask Mr. City Attorney, is there a way to limit Zoom public comment to our constituents?
No. No, there's no way to do that. Uh, any, any person is considered a member of the public and has, um, has, and the Brown Act acknowledges their right to speak.
Okay. So I will open it up for discussion to see what everybody feels about this. And, and, and then I will open it up to public comments. Actually, let's, should we hear from Mr. Holmes first?
Well, let me just ask the question, Sky. Is, um, is there a ability to require that a Zoom, um, participant use to have their camera on?
Um.
Did you just ask that question? Yeah. Because anonymity is, is a weapon, um, that a lot of people use. And I mean, if they're standing there, they can't put a bag over their face. We have to know who they are. So is there a way to require that if you're speaking, it has to have your camera?
Um, I'd probably want to do some more research about that. So just analogizing by, um, by some other provisions of the, the Brown Act, you can't require somebody to identify themselves by name to, um, have the right to speak during, during a meeting. On the other hand, that law was written well before the idea of, of video conferencing existed. If it's anything other than an idea that somebody had, so, um, I, I, I'd want to look into it some more. Um, I think also, you know, you run into, I've just been something, a couple of things out. One, you'd have to deal with the possibility of people claiming that their cameras aren't working.
Right.
Um, we can set this, I think you can set the Zoom, you may be able to set Zoom settings to require people to, to have their cameras on. But again, that depends on them working. And then what I'd say is you should also consider that, um, given the technology involved, that, um, you know, given static and video, um, virtual backgrounds that people can employ your, by, by making it feasible with them to have their cameras on, you're also basically providing them with an opportunity to use the technology to amplify whatever hate speech they want to do by having, by having things in the background.
All right. Let's, uh, okay, just a, um, um, risk assessment question. Um, you know, in all of the Zoom bombing that's been going on in Marin and California in the country, has anybody brought a case, you know, that their free speech is violated at all?
Not that I'm aware of. Um, I haven't, I haven't done a recent search to, to, um, see if something's come up. Um, and also, you know, things are, things are out, would at this point would likely still be operated at the federal trial court level. So, um, you know, it, it's not, uh, it's not a reported case.
So, so probably not. We don't have a ship. And then a city manager, you know, we're part of the risk pool. This is Corvada Dara part of that same risk pool.
Well, they are, but that's a different type of risk than.
It is to go into the insurance school and go like, if, you know, if action was brought against Corvada Dara for the policy you were about to show us, would that, you know, then be, you know, um, a claim within your risk pool?
I'd have to look, but I suspect you would not get coverage because you'd have knowingly violated somebody's first amendment rights. The, um, the one thing I did want to say, I have to go look for it, but I believe one of the Zoom bombers, because Monmouth Creek was kind of the very ground zero decision as her mayor took it on and was pushing back. I think one of the Zoom bombers attended in person and essentially dared them to stop them so he could see them. And then he in person for his entire three minutes on camera, face showing. Without a litany of other names. So, um, that's the only one I know, but I believe he openly said, I dare you to cut me off. And so that means there are people out there that know that's right.
All right. Let me open this up to the public. Mr. Holmes, come on down. What do you got?
Uh, thank you for putting this on the agenda. Uh, thank you for putting this on. Public input with regard to the question about technology, there are other people who just have telephones. Uh, public input should be your priority, uh, not risk avoidance. Let, and letting citizens use modern technology should be a priority. More importantly, the very plan which you just adopted requires you to allow Zoom uh, participation. I am reading from page two forty-one here. And it says, "The city shall increase community participation in the planning process among traditionally underrepresented groups. Allow for continued virtual meetings alongside in-person public meetings to enable more residents and other stakeholders to participate in public meetings conveniently." That is what you just enacted. I can show you the paper if you wish. And when, when this was put in, you were allowing Zoom comment. So it contemplated continued virtual meetings for participation. So essentially you have just adopted the policy that required you to continue this. Couple of other points, the vast majority, as I often said, the vast majority of other towns and the county and the agencies allow Zoom comment. They are not intimidated, uh, that we're, you're talking about, uh, Mill Valley, Corvada Madera, Sausalito, Belvedere, Tiburon, Ross, Fairfax, the central Marin, uh, agencies, um, Tam District, Marin Uni Water District, et cetera. Larkspur is increasingly becoming an outlaw. Zoom bombing as a practical matter is fading into well-deserved oblivion. The Corvada reference was, was in December. And as you've been told, there are ways to deal with it. And finally, the prevalence and persistence of COVID. Public meetings, uh, should require, should allow for accommodating this. They should not be super spreaders when the risk can be easily avoided. There should be risk reduction for citizens, not just, uh, the, uh, not just the city. And, uh, I think that as a practical matter, the juveniles who participate in this and participated and perpetrated are not very likely to be bringing lawsuits or otherwise causing real problems for you. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else in the public?
Anybody on Zoom?
All right. Let's, uh, close public comment. And, uh, I have stated my, uh, my concerns. I don't, I, I don't feel strong either way. I mean, I think there's, you know, positives and negatives. I will, uh, leave it up to my fellow council members, what you think. With the understanding that if we have problems, we'll revisit this and, and, uh, discuss it then. So.
So I, um, I like the policy that you outlined that Corvada has. And I think we have a policy that's clear to everybody what we will do if they should violate our code of conduct. I think we're fine. I think we should just give it a try again. And, uh, we can always pull the plug if we find it's a problem. But I think Mr. Holmes makes some pretty good suggestions. And I, I do, you know, we do, um, I'm on orders and commissions now that, that are countywide that are still using Zoom content. So I think we need to be, um, consistent.
Yeah. Uh, I, I think I said it well, that you all will take the risk.
I agree.
Okay. Uh, so this is a business item. So I don't think we need to vote on this. We just need to give staff direction. I believe, uh, council, uh, has decided to give staff direction that would like to resume Zoom comments with, if maybe the city attorney could provide us with the written speech that would be given if there's a problem, uh, and we'll see what happens.
So, um, just to be clear, there's enough technical challenges for us here that will target the September eighteen council meeting to reinstate. You know, but the seventeenth planning commission, I don't think we can do that in here easily. So, okay.
Uh, with, with the understanding that, yeah, right, uh, city council chambers is better equipped, uh, for Zoom. Uh, I think this policy would be for meetings in the city council chambers. Okay. Uh, the staff have sufficient, uh, guidance on this one? We did. Thank you. All right. Any other comments before we wrap this up? All right. Meeting adjourned. Uh, thank you everybody. Happy day.